Meeting, we have a Zoom link on the website. Meeting ID is 842-1004-6647, passcode 532384. We are going to kick off the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and we have two members of Troop 70 with us tonight. We have Philip Ettinger, who's a life scout, and we have Chris Wells, who's a star. So guys, if you can come up here, we'll get you on camera and you can lead us in the pledge. Welcome. Would all rise?
It's right over here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the foundation of your God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey guys, you're Troop 70, you're one of the oldest troops in town, but thank you very much for coming out and keep up the good work. Next time you're here, we want to see you with eagle badges, alright? See you soon, thank you. Alright, next item up on the agenda is roll call. Penny Young, will you take the roll?
Robin Bates-Mason.
Rita Patino.
Present.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Chinsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Werman.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
And Penny Young, here. Everybody is here tonight.
Alright, welcome. Alright, next item up, number two, approval of minutes for a special meeting held on November 15th and the regular meeting held on November 17th. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, I, we pass them unanimously by consent. Number three, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to this council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes depending on how long we have this evening and we, and how many speakers we have. Would anybody like to address the council tonight? Sven England, you have the mic.
And the table.
And the table. Actually, Sven, maybe the table, the table here, I guess is, uh, the, the mic on the podium and the camera, I guess, is not working well, so. And Sven, as usual, has got his notes all ready to go, so.
Yeah, well, I want to get through this quick so you guys.
When he walked in, I thought he was coming to the meeting, sitting on this side of the table.
Sven England, 930 Drive, want to talk to you tonight about the, uh, upping the bonus from $750,000 for the town workers. Right now, with the differential between $1,000 for Board of Ed and $750 for the town workers, I think it's a wrong policy. I think it's bad management. It's not like we don't have the money. It's not like the people aren't deserving. We know that, you know, our town workers and there were a lot of public facing people, you know, who really performed outstandingly for us. We have our, our transport, transfer station folks and probably there's nobody who faces the public more in a very different way than the folks who run the sewer plant 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And we remember what COVID was like when we started out. Those people are truly, truly deserving. I know you haven't been presented with much of a compromise, you know, you've been presented with, you know, basically a fait accompli, you know, this is the number, you know, approve it or not. You remember last year as a town council, you know, that we voted individually on the two salaries that we control, treasurer and town clerk, to make sure that those people had a little extra money in their pockets because of COVID. I think that's the right thing to do. I think you guys know what's right to do tonight and it's hard, but I think you need to insist on it. Thanks very much and belated happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas to you all. I miss you.
Thank you very much. Alright, any other public comment? Alright, seeing none, move on to item number four, labor agreement. To approve a labor agreement with New Canaan Police Union Local 1575 to the Connecticut Council Police Union's number four American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO for the years July 2021 through June 2025. And Cheryl Jones is here as well as Chris Hotson, our town attorney for labor. And we had met earlier just to discuss briefly, but Cheryl, if you want to take us through, spend another 10 minutes on it.
Certainly. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am pleased to present you with a contract that I believe is very fair for both the police and the town. In regards to wages, we came in at 9.85% over four years. In regards to health, we were able to get a three-tier health plan. We took our employees from single plus one to three tiers, single, single plus one and family. The firefighters had asked, the police officers had asked for a drop plan, which is a defined retirement option plan. This helps us to plan for retirements in the future. I believe it's a good option for both the town and the police. They can take that drop plan for anywhere from a year to four years, which will help us in planning and putting people into our academy. They had asked for a bilingual stipend, uh, which three to four members will be eligible for, they will have to test for that stipend. We had given them an educational stipend and a medical stipend. And, uh, other than that, that is the contract. If you have any questions, please let me know, but I do believe it's a fair contract. The police did vote on it. Forty members voted, 39 voted for the contract, only one turned it down. Unfortunately, the chief and the commission could not be here tonight because of promotional, um, process, but they are in favor of this contract.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, and I know Mike Morrow's our head of public safety, he's our liaison and he, he actually had a couple of good questions earlier this evening, but Mike, if you want to just review some of the things that you knew about the contract and you were very supportive of it.
Sure, yes, I mean, overall for the public listening, I think this is a, a great contract. I think it was a lot of hard fought victories. We have a fantastic team that negotiates the contracts both on, with, through Cheryl and our labor council, Chris, a very, very skilled, knowledgeable council. I think that was what was very helpful to me to understand the context in which this negotiation took place as it stood different from the last contract negotiation in terms of the new labor representative. So Cheryl, if you could just kind of quickly walk the public through the change.
Yes, the union has a new, uh, union rep, uh, that is out of Boston, so that was very new for us. It took them a while to kind of understand Connecticut law, understand, uh, where we were at and what we were willing to do. It got to a point where the union rep and myself were able to take this offline, uh, and negotiate some of the issues that we were stuck on and come to an agreement, so we are happy to present this agreement tonight.
Great, thanks. And the other question I had asked was in terms of the drop plan, uh, and the, uh, the majority of the staff that is approaching that level for retirement, if you could just speak to that a little bit.
We do have five that would be eligible for this drop plan. I do not believe that all of them will take it, um, but even if we have to proceed with this, it will help us with planning in the future in regards to budgets, training and getting our new police officers into the academy.
Great, and a question that Steve had asked was, uh, the, the vote by the membership and what the ratification vote was?
Yes, we had 40 members vote for the contract, 39 voted in favor and only one turned it down.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and you know, this is one of the things that, uh, if, if the chief were here, one of the things that we always do is to thank, thank the police and thank the rank and file for all the work that they do, day in and day out, making New Canaan one of the safest places on the planet. I mean, these guys are out there every day, 365 days a year, so, you know, there is that one time where we negotiate these contracts, but I'll tell you right now, the citizens of this town and this council really appreciate what the New Canaan police do for the community and the feeling that they give out there. And they, they've got community resource officers, they've got officers in the schools. We've got a downtown officer, there's, their presence is out there, they're constantly having coffee with, with folks and they really do give the town a great feeling, so, uh, I, you know, I, I am fully supportive of the contract and, uh, I, I really, uh, support, uh, what the police are doing out there and, and there are many towns that wish they could have as successful a force as we have, so, hats off and Cheryl, thank you for all you're doing to get this done and Chris, thank you for jumping on the call. Does anybody else have any questions or want to add? Thank you very much, we'll move on to the next topic, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we need to vote. I'm new, I'm new at this, okay. Alright, so we need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the newly negotiated police contract.
Wait a second. Second, Christina, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Now you can go, now you can go home. Thank you very much. Alright, so we're going to move an item up on the agenda because it is a labor, uh, contract as well, so we're going to move number seven up, uh, to follow this, so number seven is the teacher union contract. Discussion of the recently completed teacher union negotiations, uh, and approval of a motion not to reject this contract, so this is an interesting one, so when we get to it, um, we have to have a vote not to reject, so Brian, if you might, Brian, can you go up to the mic for us and, uh, we'll walk through the teachers next? Sorry, I took you by surprise, we're moving you up on the agenda, but I'm sure you won't argue about that.
Darlene and Joanne are here as well. I'm glad you just went into the, um, vote not to reject because that's.
Yeah, it's an odd, it's an odd one.
It's, uh.
You know, Mike there, yeah.
Feeling like some action is necessary, right? So the state statute says taking no action is sort of, is accepting the contract, but it was a few cycles ago that the town council said we, we don't like to do nothing, we want to show our support. And the best we could come up with was vote not to reject. And it stood ever since, so it's kind of a nice thing, oh, thank you. As you know, we, we also recently completed the contract with our, our NCEA Teachers Union and Vivian and Rana, the president, vice president of the union are here as well, for, for discussion, what have you, but let me turn it over to our attorney, Andy Belik, just to run through the process briefly, we're here to certainly answer any questions, but at a high level, just to share, it was a, as usual, a very collaborative, cooperative experience, you know, working with our, our teachers, our staff. The, the group that Vivian and Rana put together is representative of all of our levels, all of our buildings, uh, a, a large team of sometimes around 15 folks. And they come together because they care about the district and they want to be a part of the discussion and Vivian as our, uh, union president and Rana as our vice president have been doing the work for, uh, she just told me 20 years. And so they, they bring into the conversation the experience, the pride and the, uh, you know, really just the, the knowledge of our district and who we are, so as we go into this process together, we do it knowing that we're all, we all work towards the same goal, which is to continue to have a world-class educational system for, for every one of our kids.
Um, hi, I'm Andy Belik, it's nice to be here with you this evening. Uh, I'll sort of keep it at a high level. These negotiations occur under the Connecticut Teacher Negotiation Act, uh, and consistent with that act, we begin a certain statutory number of days ahead of, uh, the budget submission date, so we began in late June, uh, with these negotiations and we were joined, um, throughout, uh, various points of the negotiations, including the mediation process, uh, by a board of finance representative, Mr. Levieri. Uh, and we were very grateful to have his presence, his input, uh, in the process. Um, uh, I think to give you some context on the negotiations, uh, the Board of Education and the teachers enjoy a very positive working relationship. Uh, and they put a real focus on that high-quality teaching and that is always at the center of the negotiation sessions. We also were negotiating, we have been negotiating, uh, during, um, a pandemic and we certainly did have discussions, uh, about, um, all that the teachers have done for, uh, the students of the community, uh, during this time and it certainly has been, uh, challenging as well as all of the efforts of the administration, um, during that time. Um, the economic circumstances in which we negotiate, um, you know, just to give you some context, um, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index has, uh, increased, I'm sure you've been following that. Uh, and, um, we have, with the partnership of our teachers over the years, we have enjoyed, um, on the Board of Ed side, uh, successful management of health insurance costs. Uh, and that continues to be, uh, the priority, uh, in these negotiations. The step movement, so in a typical teacher's contract, um, there's a, this contract has 19-step schedule. Uh, and so, uh, each year of the contract, uh, step movement for those who have not yet reached step 19, um, is, um, expected, uh, certainly, and that is, uh, the outcome that we have, uh, achieved in these negotiations. The, the parameters, we really had very few language changes, the work rules, we, it's such a positive and collaborative working relationship. There really aren't any real work problems to work out at the table, it really just is sort of focused on the, on the economics. And, uh, so the, the sort of, um, high-level, uh, um, agreement, you know, that's before you, um, is step movement in each year of a three-year contract. So we start in 2022, uh, July 1st and it will conclude, uh, June 30th of 2025. Uh, and, um, the one challenge with the 19-step schedule is that, um, we don't change the, we don't apply a GWI or a general wage increase to the schedule. So teachers advance through the schedule except at the top step. So one of our historical challenges in negotiations has been that that top step tends to get higher and higher and kind of break away as a percentage. So, um, we worked very collaboratively at the table with the, with the, um, NCEA and we are now, um, uh, moving, those teachers who moved to step 19 will move off schedule in this contract and they will receive a 2% wage increase, which is a fixed dollar amount. Um, and that keeps the schedule stable, um, and sort of, uh, helps with the bubble that can occur at step 19. In addition, the health insurance plan will remain as it is. Um, it's a high deductible health plan with a 90-10 coinsurance, um, which in, uh, teacher bargaining units is certainly, um, uh, not the norm. It's something that has been achieved through prior negotiations and arbitration. Uh, and the percentage of increase in premium contribution will go up a half a percent a year to 21.5, 22 and 22.5 in the final year, which is also in keeping with the current settlements. The total cost, I'll, I'll give you the annual, um, amount, uh, it is 3.46, 3.44 and 3.20, which is very much in keeping with the averages right now in Fairfield County settlements. If you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, so, uh, that section you referred to with the, uh, total cost, the first bullet says step movement costs 7.17, does that, does that reflect the fact that the, the use of a step structure inherently brings with it inflation?
Yes.
In, in, in pay? Uh, so, so much of what, if we're, we're talking about, uh, 10% over the three-year period, seven of that was already sort of inherent, is that right?
It's baked into the salary grid as it exists.
7.17.
Yeah.
That's right.
And the, so, so when we talk about anticipating the budget process, uh, the 2020, 20, 2020, 22, 23 span, 3.46, that's the kind of number we're going to see in the budget, is that right?
Will account for some turnover anticipation of turnovers, right?
Right.
The, as you know, when we cost out the contract, we use the, exist the staff that we have when we build the model and then we, we, um, assume that nobody comes or goes and you move them through the, through the grid and through the contract, so the numbers that you see are higher than they'll actually be on the ground as that turnover occurs. Especially as you get out in years two and three, right, because you've had some more turnover.
A date and time.
Yeah.
And we say that's our distribution of teachers.
Right.
And we, that's how we calculate the increment cost, um, but, um, certainly there's variation and it's typically less than, um, uh, because you have turnover at the, um, higher levels, at the higher level step and then a new teacher comes in at a lower step.
But for planning purposes, you know, as we do that, uh, pretty close, right? I mean, that is, if we had to have our staff now, we're going to have that same staff next year, that would be our cost.
So if we were, if we were to adopt a goal in the budget of St. Julia, it'd be nice if we could get to 3% overall for the overall contract. Uh, that, that's one reason why it might get closer to three, the turnover, but the, but everything else, uh, that you do, uh, other aspects of the, of the operation could in theory provide savings that would allow us to offset some of this.
And as you know, our, our salary is, salary and benefits are around 82% of the contract all in and the teachers are the largest part of that.
Do we have a total, uh, total cost increase, uh, dollar amount for the calculation?
We do. Do you have it handy?
It's in this big pile, yes.
Why don't I ask Dr. Keating to come up since you made the spreadsheet?
Yep. So the total for the three years cumulative and compounded is 8.49 over three years.
That's the increase.
The incremental change.
Yes.
Without any turnover, three changes.
We expect that to make it less because of, right?
Exactly. Yep. And it's, am I right in, I'm seeing that it's, um, 1.4 in year one? 2.8 in year two and then those two years added to the 1.3 in year three?
So the way to look at it is, if you look at the salary count today and then you look at three years from now, the decrement, the incremental change would be 8.4. It's spread out, we, we, as well amongst each year, every year it's going to go up, so that's the total.
Oh, because it's cumulative, right?
It's cumulative, that's the cumulative cost, not the year-to-year cost.
Right, and can you also just maybe walk us through a little bit about the off-scale increase, what that is, how it applies, the negotiations surrounding that, that would be very helpful.
Sure, um, uh, so the, the teachers who are currently at step 19 in a, um, one way, um, to address the, um, the salary increase is to just add dollars to step 19. What that has done over time is have created a much larger gap between step 18 and 19, 16, 17, 18, 19, it widens the gap. So what we've agreed to do is, um, we've agreed that teachers who reach step 19 the next following year, they move off, off the schedule completely. They receive just a flat dollar, annual dollar increase, um, and it's set forth in the materials you have, but it's 2% of whatever lane they're in on the salary schedule, depends on whether it's the bachelor's, the master's, et cetera.
Right. And I just think for the public's purpose, um, just in general terms, on the, on the step scale, the, uh, the headcount, where, where would you say it's a little bit heavier? Weighted a little bit more towards the higher end, you're saying, or is it, could you give just a general?
Yeah, right, it is, it's, the majority is at the higher end and I think we're looking at about a third and at the, by the end of the contract, it's a little, it's over half that are at the top or, you know, off of the contract at that point, um, off the salary scale, yep.
Yes, it's heavily the majority.
Which is a sign of the, of us being a great place to work. Longevity matters.
Well, I think we, we talked a little bit about the, the, the fact of hiring in any market right now is very difficult, so to retain employees is, is important as well. There is, there is a downside that you do skew at a higher level, but, you know, generally that means you have happier employees and, and they're staying with you longer, but.
One of the things we did agree to, um, was, and it doesn't really affect the cost analysis, um, but, uh, we are going to zero out the third step, so currently, um, a teacher who comes with zero to two years of experience is placed at step three on the contract. Uh, we are, the minimum salaries for teachers in New Canaan are not as competitive as you are at the maximums. So, uh, we did agree to zero out step three, so now a teacher who comes to us, whether they have zero, one, two or three years of experience, they will automatically go to step four on the contract.
So the hiring process then is, you're, you're saying you're putting a more attractive offer out there initially?
Yes, so, yes, it's designed to raise the minimum salaries. Do you know about how many staff are getting stipends, you know, shared? I guess that's a stipend as well on top of the salary.
I don't know offhand, I know the, the positions that we have and it is all spelled in the, out in the contract, as you know, it's the, um, you know, it's that base salary and it's a percentage off of that, that becomes the stipend. But we also, when you start to get into the athletics and everything else, there's, um, this is in the contract itself, you see, there's, there are many pages, I'd be glad to get that information, I just wouldn't, I couldn't put a number out. Um, because it's everything from department chairs at the high school to, you know, the, the football coaches on the sidelines and everybody in between, so I know we, we have a budget number that we work around.
Our second's from just below a million dollars from athletics, uh, BPA clubs.
And it can be pretty flexible because from time to time we'll have new clubs that pop up, like, like the Quidditch Club at the high school when I was the principal there, you know, so you, based on student interest, so it does flex a bit.
Can you have more than one stipend?
Sure, sure, yeah, coaches in different seasons, um, advisors of various clubs.
The other question I have is, so I see in your, this review of mediation settlement that's on our tablet here, so, um, one C, the parties did not reach a settlement in negotiations largely over economic issues and the mediation was conducted. I mean, just kind of at a 30,000-foot level, I'm just curious as to what were the sticking points at that particular point in time?
Um, wages.
Right, but specifically, I mean, can you give me just a little bit more on that? Just be, at least so I can understand a little bit of the back and forth.
Um, well, I think we, they, we were pretty far apart at that point, um, I, and through the help of, uh, Mr. Ritchie, who is the mediator who comes, uh, from the state of Connecticut and actually, um, mediates a number of these, uh, uh, teacher negotiations over the season, uh, we were able to bridge that divide, but at the beginning, um, and through the process until we got to mediation, we were, we were, continued to be far apart.
And it was really spit, really low, uh, located with, uh, on the wages issue, was there anything else?
Um, well, we had some health insurance discussions, I mean, um, as you may be aware, the, um, the last contract, two contracts ago, there was a arbitration, uh, in which the 90-10 coinsurance was awarded as the board's offer. Um, and that was not something that the association was in agreement with, um, and so, um, there were some health insurance discussions as well that we were not able to resolve until we got through the mediation.
Okay.
It's interesting that, that the cost numbers compared to the nine Fairfield County settlements are pretty close, it's, is that any comment on that, I, because you don't necess, you didn't necessarily get to those numbers in the same way.
Right, right, you don't, and there are different, um, sort of mechanics in other contracts versus ours, right? Like the, the insurance is a good example, us, we're self-insured, some of our colleagues in Fairfield County are part of the state partnership plan and, you know, other pieces like that. The, you know, I think it is really about, there, certainly they have some close colleagues in the, in the region that if we're negotiating, we share some experiences a little bit back and forth, but ultimately, you know, we all have pretty mature contracts and we're looking at a lot of the same variables in, in having the discussions. Uh, this, the, the new variable in this negotiation, of course, was everything that happened right, leading up into it in 2020 and the, the pandemic and the challenges therein and, uh, you know, that's something that we, of course, in all the conversations and our discussions, wanted to make sure that the faculty, faculty was well aware of the gratitude we felt and, and the respect that, you know, we felt for all of their efforts. And, uh, and they echoed the same, you know, that, the partnership that we've had, so, um, I think that for us, guys, we've gone through it, we are, um, very fortunate to have relationships that are based on, on respect that way and, uh, and it helped us to get to, you know, to the conclusion that we have.
That is sometimes how it works out across the season, sometimes it just kind of, um, there must be some sort of, uh, special magic.
Something in the water.
But it's a good, it's an observation that we all make every season that there seems to be a number for the season.
Yeah.
And what is that number going to be and, and to your point, Mr. Morrow, I think that took time through the mediation process to kind of figure out what is the number.
Right.
This year.
Right, you don't always want to be first.
It's hard to describe until you get to mediation.
Sure, right, you don't want to be first, Mrs. Darling.
Right, you sort of.
Alright, any other questions?
Not a question, just maybe a comment. I just love to, uh, in support actually of the contract, um.
Um, having an eighth grader at Saks Middle School and seeing firsthand what the teachers did, how innovative, innovative they were. Extra help that they gave, the communication they had with individual parents. We have, I have to say, and, and I, you know, I come from another cool school district in California. We were in a private school and I would say the teachers and the experience that I've had rival that experience. And, you know, part of that is getting the right people in place with the right experience. So I think you get what you pay for. And I have to say, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of, I, I think this is actually a great deal for the town. So that's just commentary from someone who's seeing it firsthand.
Thank you, Rita.
Can I make a, a quick one along those similar lines? You probably saw in the Wall Street Journal like ten days ago, they, they said, okay, it's definitive that in-person learning is the home run. And they, and they, they ratcheted down to using Virginia as the low point because they had the lowest in-person learning in the country. They also had almost a thirty-two percent drop off of, of performance of, of kids that, that completed their grades to satisfaction. And kudos to, to you for making that, you all for making that decision that in person was such a huge priority and you pulled that off because it, it really did work to the benefit of the kids. And, and you, we haven't seen, uh, we've, it looked like it's with some of the standardized test scores that you've been talking about recent board meetings. There's a little bit of, of fall off from, from highs, but not to the point of making the schools less competitive or the kids less capable of getting into colleges. I mean, considering what the kids have been through, the fact that they did so well is pretty phenomenal. Cause I think we expected it would work out not quite that well.
And along the way, they've picked up skills, um, that we can't measure through standardized tests.
Wow, yeah.
You know, so, um, yeah, we're getting through it together.
Yeah. And, and just also commentary on the SATs, because I have a niece and a nephew who are, they're at Darien High School and they're trying to get into, they wish they weren't. So they're, they decided they, they chose to take the SATs. But, um, what I'd heard from them was that there weren't as many, you know, courses for the SATs. They, they weren't able to take them as many times. So when I look at those SAT scores and how they may have gone down a little part of that, again, this is, this is me extrapolating in my own. The more you, the more you take that test, the better you get at it. And so they were, they were actually disappointed. They couldn't take it more time so they could get their, you know, their scores up. So I do think that is part, you know, that could be part of why there was even like a slight dip. Um, again, I'm, I'm guessing, but I think, um, that it's something that you need to consider, like kind of the bigger picture.
And again, I don't want to, like, we talk about this all night too, but the, um, colleges have learned quite a bit as well. There's, they're moving, going to test optional and, you know, we're really starting to see, um, a more holistic understanding, you know, of, of students as they come through and all of what they need to know and be able to do to really thrive.
Well, thank you. And, and, you know, I know through the negotiations, you mentioned Mr. Lavieri earlier. Todd Lavieri is the chairman of the Board of Finance and he's, uh, a, a number of times commented on how being in the room was an important thing for him to witness, to learn. He was very impressed with the entire, uh, process from start to finish. So, uh, and he was pleased with the, the results and, uh, anytime you can impress Mr. Lavieri, you've done a good job. So, uh, he's quite thorough to say the least. So, and, and over the years, we've had, uh, sort of a liaison in the room. And I remember when Mary Cody was in the room a while back. And, uh, it's, it's so important for the public to know that they, they are represented and represented well in that room. And, and Todd did a great job, uh, this time around. And actually, one of the things that led to one of the, one of the initiatives that we're going to talk about later in the meeting is, is the thank you to the teachers for all they did during COVID. You've heard some of it, uh, here, but we'll talk about that later. But it, it really is amazing the way the teachers rallied around, uh, and really in some cases had to teach, they had kids at home, their own kids at home, and they're teaching our kids. So, uh, amazing job by the teachers and.
Many cases they had to leave their kids at home to come to New Canaan to teach our kids and have someone whole babysitting their children because their home districts were closed. And so.
We haven't yet seen Vivian and Rana have an amazing video that, um.
Yeah. When do we get to see that?
You should absolutely see it. They, Mr. Lavieri got to see it, uh, and.
As did Mr. Williams.
Yes, and Mr. Williams, you got to see their video, that complication circulated. A, a wonderful video, um, that showed, um, how flexible, adaptable, um, the teachers were and showed the joy, even in the midst of the pandemic, the joy of learning, uh, for the students. And, uh, I think it, I think it helped keep us all focused during the negotiation on, uh, what this is all about. So, um, we thank them for, and if you haven't had a chance to see it, it's a wonderful video.
Great. Well, later we're going to talk about marketing. This, this could be a perfect fit.
Well, thank you again. Thank you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we need a motion. Now, here we go. This is the non-vote. Sorry. So who wants to put this into, uh, some sort of understandable language? Tom, I'm gonna let you do this. You're the.
I move that the town council votes not to reject the, the recently negotiated teacher contract.
Need a second? Rita? All in favor of not rejecting? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Item number five, back to, we're back on target again here. First selection update. One hand, you have the mic. A lot of good things going on in town. Busy time of year. Very busy.
Busy time of year. Yes.
Does your wife, does your wife know, uh, you're, you're here again tonight? Cause you were here last night and.
I'll give you the report that I gave to the Board of Finance last night. So I don't have to do it over. First of all, on COVID, um, I assume you all read the weekly, uh, updates on Thursday night. We continue to be kind of in moderate range of new cases every week. I was disappointed yesterday that Stanford Advocate reported a three hundred percent increase in New Canaan from Novi, early November to now, and, um, that just totally misrepresents, uh, what we're experiencing. Yeah, I think the media is, is, is kind of hysterical about COVID right now. And, um, so our vaccination rates are off the charts. We had another, uh, youth vaccination clinic tonight over at Divine Cottage. We're doing, um, uh, we're continuing to do boosters at, uh, Erwin and, um, and at Divine Cottage, we're doing week, twice a week testing for COVID. So, um, bottom line on COVID is that, you know, we're at least in New Canaan and surrounding, directly surrounded communities like Wilton and, and Darien. Um, our vaccination rates are so high that we're not experiencing any great, um, illness for those who are vaccinated, those who are unvaccinated, we continue to say get vaccinated. We tell that to our town employees, the few remaining that are, are left are unvaccinated because it's clearly a, a pandemic for the unvaccinated at this point. And, uh, but I also want to say our health department has done an absolutely amazing job, um, both with the vaccination clinics, the, um, booster clinics and the, uh, the weekly testing. They've just amazing jobs. We appreciate everything they've done. Capital project update, the playhouse roof that you've seen has been finished. And, um, believe it or not, they're working on bringing natural gas this week to town hall, which we've been waiting a long time for, which is going to allow us to, uh, we signed a contract, we authorized a contract yesterday with Aegis to, uh, install CHP in the town hall, which would, uh, start in a few months. And, um, and then finally the, um, downtown infrastructure year. The Anis Herbals with the aquarium water on Elm Street and Main Street is coming to an end. The, um, Tiger, do you want, you want to comment on, uh, all we've been through? It's, um, it's good that it's, you know, it's coming to an end and, um, we'll be paving a lot of streets next summer from the first year of the gas installation. And, uh, so on the, um, we talked about the two twenty Elm Street purchase already, so I won't mention that again right now. We completed twenty-five million dollar bond offering a couple of weeks ago with an unbelievable true interest cost of one point five two seven percent. The twenty-year bonds are one point nine five percent. Pretty amazing rates we're getting. We're making great progress on a playhouse operator. Uh, we plan to come forward in January with a proposal and a, a capital request to, uh, the playhouse. And more than likely now that we're in a mode of, uh, doing some substantial ADA and other compliance, we're probably not going to reopen the playhouse until next fall. But, uh, but we'll have, I think, exciting news on the playoffs. Uh, we also are doing a, a great work on the Wavening House study and, um, we'll come forward with the plan in January with the, uh, third leg, leg of the, uh, Wavening House, uh, renovation work for the second floor. And, um, we have no progress to report on the CFO search. Uh, I received today the, uh, technical report for the cell tower at eighteen thirty-seven Bonus Ridge and, um, we plan to have a public hearing in January before the Board of Selectment. Yeah, we have a ninety-day period to have community consultation and then hopefully that'll go to the Citing Council by April first. And, um, as you know, the, uh, well, the cell tower at Soundview Lane is being energized this week. And AT&T should be, uh, getting their antennas going in the, in the next month, six weeks. It takes a while for them to mesh it into their the network. And then what else is coming? Um, I think that's it.
Wow. Yeah. So busy. That's a busy, busy, uh, couple of weeks. Thank you for that.
And we're, you know, we're in budget season.
Yeah, he's in, he's behind you there. He's back there.
Linda's making a guest appearance. The, you know, Linda has departed, but he's actually come back for the audit report. He, um, he did an amazing job helping us get the first round of the budget model put together. And, um, so we're, we got to jump on the budget year. And, uh, I want to thank Linda again for making this transition, which is horrible in a way to miss him personally, but, uh, he's been very cooperative to get, make this transition for us. So.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. And Linda, actually it was a nice segue because you're up next. Item number. Yeah. Yeah. Item number six, uh, approval of, approval of request to consider the recommendation of the Audit Committee to accept audited financial statements. So it's got the Audit Committee and Linda.
Sure.
So we did, uh, put together a couple of slides that you have in your tablets and, uh, is being projected over there. What I wanted to do is just kind of run through three slides just to show where we were, where we ended the year financially. And then, uh, Bill on the Audit Committee has some comments as well on behalf of the Audit Committee, uh, related to the slides. So the first slide that you have is, and we did, you do have a draft copy of the full audit document, um, on your tablets as well. So the first slide is just summary statement of net position, uh, looking at the, um, entire, um, organization, government-wide financials, basically saying, what is the health of, of the town? Um, and so we trended three years worth of data. You could see if you're twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, you could see that the total government in position is a little over two hundred and thirteen million, which is higher compared to the one ninety-nine million in the prior year. Uh, when we talk about the entity, there's basically three components of the town. There is the governmental activities, which is the primary function of what we do, the, the police, fire, capital budgets and whatnot. And therefore in that first slide, you'll see what the governmental activities net position is. The second component are business type activities. In our case, the only business type activity we have is the pool, the Wavening Pool. So that's essentially the activities of the pool. And so this measures the health, the value, total net position of the pool, facilities, uh, infrastructure and so forth. And then the third component, which is not part of this, but it is part of the town, um, it's called fiduciary or custodial funds. These are funds that we manage, um, in trust, but we don't, we, they're, they're not us to spend. So these would be OPEB pension, um, and those types. So those are not part of this because we don't count them towards the overall government state, government, um, statement. So that's what this is. So this is primarily what we do on a day-to-day basis. You know, the audit is really the completion of an annual process of, you know, once the budget is approved, we basically are charged to spend the money to deliver the services. And therefore town, town staff, uh, department heads particularly work year-round, uh, we pay bills, we issue invoices for extra duty and those types of things. Uh, but throughout, throughout that, there, there's a process, there's a standard that needs to be followed to make that work. And so what the audit basically comes in, it measures, did we do these things within the standards? And are there any, are there any issues that were encountered in the process? And so at this point, I would like to just, um, you know, to thank the staff of the Department of Finance, uh, you know, they are the gatekeepers of this. Uh, but we do work closely with other department heads. Um, and obviously, as you know, the way that Connecticut is set up, the Board of Ed is part of the town. And therefore we work closely with the Board of Ed, Dr. Keating and her team. Uh, we do monthly reconciliations. We present to you budget reports on a monthly basis. That is information that we receive from them. We reconcile it and then we present it to you. And so it is a totally team effort. So the audit represents the management, not just on the town side, but also, um, on the Board of Ed side. And we were fortunate this year to have Diane join, um, us as, as controller, um, after our prior controller left. And so, um, when this process started, she kind of started with the audit. And therefore, um, she, 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 she jumped in and, and, and did a lot of work to get this, to get this done. And then obviously, as I mentioned, the Audit Committee will also provide their comments, um, as overseers of, of the audit. The next slide is basically just looking at the position, changes net position, activities. You'll see that total revenues over the year across all of these governmental funds was a hundred and seventy-four million. This does include the capital projects compared to the prior year. You'll see under program revenues, we saw an increase. Uh, this does include the ARPA funds that you're going to be discussing. Those will receive the first installment. So that is categorized under program revenue. And so you'll see that, um, accounted for in here and you'll see commentary on it in the audit documents, uh, that, that you receive. On the expense side is just looking at overall governmental activities. Uh, you'll notice that public works in total shows a decline. As I mentioned, this is not just a public works operation, but this also includes capital projects, the roads and bridges, because this is looking at the government entity, not just the day-to-day operations. Uh, that decrease is basically just a function of the projects that we did throughout the year. And so this year we did fewer projects compared to the year before. And it's really just the timing of when these projects, um, are done. So, so that's essentially what that is. I did provide information on the third slide, just where we stand from a debt, uh, perspective. And so you could see that our bonded debt is grouped into two major categories. Again, the governmental activities, these are the roads, the bridges, the school buildings, the things that we do. And therefore you could see where the debt was before and where the debt is in fiscal year twenty-one. Business type activities, I mentioned, this is the pool. Uh, this year, actually the year that we're in now, we finally finished the twenty-year bond on, on the pool. So this two hundred and twelve will get retired this year and that'll be zero. So that project, uh, will be completed and we won't have, unless we issue new debt. But we will essentially be retiring the balance of the pool debt. So overall you'll see that, and this is of June thirtieth. We ended the year with about ninety-nine point three million in total debt outstanding compared to a hundred and seven the prior year. You will note that we did issue twenty-five million dollars this year, uh, last month, that, well, this month, actually. Uh, we do retire about thirteen million dollars annually. So we issue twenty-five, we'll retire thirteen. So on average, if we do nothing else this year, the total outstanding debt will go up about twelve million, the net of the increase and the decrease on an annual basis. Um, and then the final slide is just looking at fund balance, uh, where we are. We talk about the health and our ability to, to do things. This year we were able, last year, we were able to provide the COVID unlapsing fund so that the Board of Ed could, could provide services during that period. We were able to provide additional funding to internal service funds and so forth. But this is basically allows us to continue to operate, um, when, um, gives us the option to continue to provide services even when the revenue and the expense pictures are, are not, are not favorable to us. So the top part is looking at the governmental fund. You'll see that the general fund is the first number at, at the very top. So we ended the year with an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of about twenty-six point six million. This is roughly seventeen and a half percent of total expenses. You recall that the Board of Finance has set a target of about ten percent. Uh, GFOA recommends about sixteen point six percent, which is equivalent to three months' worth of operating expenses. And so we are, we are above those two thresholds. And so financially, we are sitting, um, in, in a good position. And then we have some assigned funds, uh, within that, and then all other governmental funds total of forty-nine. And then below I talked about the proprietary funds. So you have the pool fund, um, and then the last two, which are of significance, because we did talk about this, the internal service funds. As you know, the town and the Board of Ed are self-insured. And therefore we track this closely because this is our ability to provide those services. So you'll see in this instance, the town internal service fund grew by about a little over two hundred thousand this year. But you noticed that, and you probably hear this when we begin the budget discussion, that the Board of Ed Health Internal Service Funds were. that the Board of Ed held internal service funds where we drew down it. We drew it down by almost six hundred thousand, which is just the function of the ins and the outs. And each budget cycle, the Board of Ed looks at this. They come up with projections and they determine an appropriate funding level so that they are in in line with our reserve policy and with best practice on where where they would like to be. But with that, I'd like to toss it to Bill. Unless you have any questions on the numbers themselves, but I think it's a great report. The town is in a good financial position and there's no reason for concern.
I have a quick question. You said you're reflecting ARPA and program revenues. Is that the full six million?
No, this is just the the half that we received.
Actually received.
The second half will be counted in twenty two, once we.
And not reflecting any of the payouts. Okay, thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Steve. The Audit Committee, which is comprised of five members, George Maranis is here with us, this is Chuck Jacobson. Both of them do a lot of terrific work, as does Rob Fryer and Ed Kangas, who couldn't be with us tonight. And we had five formal meetings this year. And then there's a lot of personal work that goes on, you know, back at home to at your desk. The CAFRA report that you all have on your pad, which I guess must be at least a hundred pages, if not longer. You know, most of the committee members go through each of the words and commas on that report and so on. As Linda could attest to, he gets all the questions and so on. You know, a lot's been said about the report and the quality of the report, the substance of the report. But, you know, we have received some awards that goes, the credit for that goes to the staff, London, and you know, there's so. We want to acknowledge that. And we've tried a couple of times to ask him to stay, but you know, I know many of you have, because I've seen some of the emails, but we have been unsuccessful. I give I give him a big hug, but I don't think I'm allowed to these days anymore. So that's not going to work either.
Why not?
On the two thousand and twenty one annual comprehensive financial report, there are three things which I think are on on the slide. The first thing I want to just refer to is the committee focused. There's a lot of things we do. But there are four or five areas we focused on. And one of them was because of COVID, a lot of the auditing was done off site. The employees were off site or the auditing firm was off site. And so it makes the audit challenge, you know, more difficult than typical. And, you know, we spent a lot of time understanding the process that they went through, how they did that electronically, how they how the orders got satisfied. And at the end of the day, we were satisfied here at the town that that worked effectively. As it has in most of the companies and corporations throughout America, right? I mean, everybody sort of faced with that same issue. Now, the second thing we we focused on was the impact of COVID, the financing from the federal government, from the state, how it's been accounted, how much has been recorded, how much has been disclosed and so on. The third thing that we focused on was the MDNA. The MDNA is the Management Discussion Analysis. And for those of us who may not be deep in 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 background or training from a financial standpoint, that is supposed to be a section of what you can go to and read it and then fully understand everything that's going on in the town. And I have to say, we've made a lot of progress over the last couple of years. I want to acknowledge Chuck and George and Robin in particular for the amount of effort that they put in there with Linda. But we collectively have a long way to go before it really jumps at you and you say, ha, I got it. And the third thing we focused on, which I want to call the attention, is the LT liabilities, the long term liabilities. And the Audit Committee is focused on audit, risk and reputation. And this is a theme that some of you have been around for a long time, heard before. The long term liability of the town, even though our debt is reflected on page one forty four of the CAFRA report, is in fact ninety eight million dollars. We did, as was reported, add another twenty five million dollars to that. So we're now at a hundred and twenty three million dollars, which is the highest. There's only been one year in the last ten that we were higher than that. And I think we still are amongst, if not the number one town in the state with debt per capita. And the second thing, again, we're focused on risk and reputation is on page. I think it's page eighty two of the report. And we have an unfunded liability, which is the responsibility of the state. And then we've talked about this before. It has risen from when we first started talking about it, from about a hundred and ten million to a hundred and ninety one million, which is the unfunded pension liability for teachers, which somebody has to pay. I'm not saying us. And the the assumptions that the state uses in computing that, you know, are so liberal that that number is depressed to a hundred and ninety one rather than being higher than a hundred and ninety one. And, you know, that's a matter that we continue to focus on. We have a lot more disclosure in report today than we had when the Audit Committee was first formed. But that's something that, you know, as long as you focus on to make your decision with those two bits of information, that's fine. The next item is that the accounting firm PKF has done a good job for us. They are issuing an opinion, the so called a clean opinion, no qualifications on that or any of the other subsidiary opinions that they render. And unlike a number of years ago, where we unfortunately had a number of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, again, this year, we don't have any of those, which is a credit to the staff, both of the town and of the Board of Education. And then, so the Audit Committee is recommending that you, you know, we're recommending to you that you accept and that the town files the CAFRA report. The orders have noted, and we have noted a number of potential opportunities, which is the year end closing cycle itself, the MDNA, which I just referred to. Again, shared services between the Board of Education and Town for saving money, and then some other benchmarking that we could do. And then I also, in ending, want to really thank the entire staff, you know, Kevin and Brian, and Linda and Joanne, the auditing firm and all the respective teams. We have excellent, we have excellent cooperation between the Board of Education and Town, the outside order and the Audit Committee. I, there's never a question that we ask that doesn't get answered immediately. I won't give you the detail of it, but the other day I called, Brian may not know this, I called his office because I was concerned about something, but he was at a meeting and I didn't think it was important enough to pull him out of the meeting, but I'm, but then I called Joanne and she was right on top of it and had the answer as you would, as you would well expect. And we've had some examples of that with the town as well with London. So so, you know, we're happy from that standpoint. We recommend that you focus on the areas that we ask you to focus on, particularly the long term items, but also that you accept the CAFRA report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions from the council? Oh, Mr. Maranis. Sure, come on up. Happy to have you.
Audit Committee's finished?
All right, hold on, George. We need a mic here. Hold on, George. Have a seat there.
His entire career in public accounting, rising to partner in charge of the tri-state region of Deloitte and Touche. They don't come much higher than that. That town, I think, is immensely lucky to have him as the chairman of this committee. As a sidebar, Ed Kangas was the partner in charge of Touche Ross before the merger of Deloitte and Touche, now known simply as Deloitte. They're Chuck has had a long career in corporate accounting and brings a tremendous amount of experience in dealing in the real world. He has worked for major public companies involved in ma- major mergers and and also perhaps more than anything else with respect to his job here. He's been sort of a a second CFO, right? I I I think I can say that he has been an immense help to Orlando, particularly lately. And who does that leave? Me?
Well, that's that's up to me to thank you, George. I mean, you've you've been.
Last but not least, thirty years in public accounting, retiring as a partner with Deloitte, introduced into accounting and in the world of cities and towns by you folks remain may remember Dick Bond, who was the selectman and put me on the finance committee and spent two or three years on this finance committee of the town of New Canaan, also on certain boards with the building committees and even worked with the Board of Ed in certain projects. I am now. Oh, let me not forget, I was also for five years the chief administrative officer.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was wondering when you're gonna mention that.
So I bring a world of experience in the work we do. So I just wanted to, you know, fill in a little bit.
Yeah, well, George, thank you. There's a lot of new folks who are on the.
You don't pay for this. You wouldn't know what the charges are.
Well, there is, thank you, George. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you've done as well. And, you know, this is, this really is a dream come true for for me and Penny and those of us who've been around a while, who were here when we had the idea of forming an Audit Committee and you know, back then, there wasn't, there wasn't even a thought anywhere of having an Audit Committee. And the council put this idea together and we were so blessed that we have this kind of talent in our town. I mean, when you you just discussed two or three of our members here, there isn't a town around that could say they've got a few CFOs of these type of firms in their audit committee. I mean, it is really, really amazing what we have. And we can't thank you enough. And, you know, the the awards and the platitudes that we talk about that the town gets, we don't take those lightly. I mean, we we remember, some of us remember those days, those dark days of sitting here wondering which way was up. I mean, it was, it was not always this rosy, patting ourselves on the back with all this hard work that goes into it. There was a lot of days where it wasn't quite the same. So we really, really appreciate where we are today. You've set the bar very, very high, Linda, very high. And it's going to be tough to get there. But, you know, I fully expect that next year we'll be sitting in the same place, AAA rated again, and hopefully everything will be in order. And when I hear things like working together with the Board of Ed, calling the Board of Ed, getting all the answers that we need, I can't tell you how happy that makes me. And it's just how far we've come in this town. So thank you to everybody who's who worked so hard behind the scenes. And thank you for this great presentation. Anybody else have any thing to add?
Okay. I have one really quick question. I'm sorry. Thank you. That was a very thorough report and I really appreciate it. And I'm a newbie, so forgive me. But when you mentioned the one hundred and ninety one million dollars of unfunded pension liability, that kind of made me.
Well, in some respects, in some respects, is you know, sort of not something that's all false. I mean, it's not a negative.
I understand. I just want to understand a little bit better.
The a long, long time ago, before my history, the pension fund was taken on by the state.
Right.
So Brian and Joanne could explain this much greater than I can, but fundamentally, all the teachers pensions that are granted are an obligation of the state and.
Of the state, not of the town.
State, and there are assets against that. And so our share, which I my recollection has been a couple of years, about one percent of the unfunded liability, that one percent is a hundred and ninety one. And there's been a lot of history, which has been suggestions that towns pick that up or whatever. At the end of the day, someone has to pick it up with the.
This is a problem all over the country, I understand, but.
May very well be, but, you know, but when you look at the, when you look at the financial statements, it's it's important to understand that there's unfunded obligation. Exactly how that obligation comes into the equation is another question, but there is an obligation of a hundred and ninety one million dollars that we have made, our share, one percent. And times a hundred percent, we as citizens have made to the teachers of the state. And someone in the state has to pay for it. That's all we're saying. You know, it's 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 just quality of attention. It's a, you know, it's a big item in the financial statements. And all we ask you to do is read it. There's not much more we can do about it.
Right.
At this particular point. And the last thing we'd want to do is send a hundred and ninety one million dollars to the state. Because that would go in with the other assets. And then, you know, our liability would go from a hundred and ninety one billion to a hundred and eighty nine million, which would be a good plan.
So is that being, I mean, is that being just paid off year by year by year? How is that?
The states looked at it a number of different ways to, I can remember, I I forget exactly which town council chairman or or first selectman it was, but at one time, there was a state representative who came down and had a great, great idea of giving the obligation to the town, which I said, you know, a hundred, in that time, at that time was a hundred and ten million and our and our net equity was about forty or fifty million. And I said, well, you know, that would put us in bankruptcy by about sixty million. And since we're probably the strongest town in the state, you know, everybody else would be bankrupt as well. And it'd be quite truthful with you. I forget the name of the person, but I don't think he fully had understood that until we explained it to him. Because so it's a big conundrum and.
It's a big number.
But it's a state, it's, you know, it's a state issue, but at the end of the day, it's a town issue as well, because, you know, we're just us, we're one percent of the town. And so so, you know, my point, my reason for pointing it out is not to be an awamis, but, you know, I know that when you have a hundred, two hundred page report, particularly if you're not a financial expert going through the two hundred page report is laborious at best, right? And then picking up on that, you know, might be something that you would miss. And that's really why I pointed it out. The rest of it, so the rest of it all balances out. But that's a, what we would call a contingent liability. And and I would say if this was corporate accounting opposed to government accounting, we probably record it.
I think plus also had to be understood, even if we were to cut a check tomorrow for a hundred and ninety one million, that doesn't mean all, it doesn't mean teachers who served in New Canaan get that money. It just goes into a general pool.
A hundred and ninety one become a hundred and eighty nine.
It's not like it's our teacher.
That's not a good plan.
No, it's not.
And so I'm not sure what you, don't don't ask me the question, what's a good plan? That's above my pay grade. But this is a heck of a problem, right?
Yeah, it's not like they billed us yet. They haven't, like, the state hasn't said this is your obligation yet. This is. The state hasn't said this is your obligation, New Canaan.
Well, the state, well, there's two ways of looking at that. That would be the way town council would look at it.
Right.
That's the way citizens would look at it.
Right.
But if you're an accountant or an auditor, it's all liability.
Right, I understand.
The only question is, you know, we're just talking about whose set of books it's on, you know?
Right.
So, I mean, I, what you just said is absolutely correct, but, you know, it sort of depends a little bit as to this perspective which you you come at it, right?
Understood.
Of course, to be thorough, that it wasn't that long ago, just a few years ago, that there was a proposal in the state legislature to to actually bill us, not the full one ninety one, but it was like.
At that time, the hundred and ninety one was a hundred and twenty.
Right.
But the the good news part of this right now is that is that the state is in a pretty good position to make a decision to pay down some of that liability, whether they will or not is a question.
If they use, you know, the the discount rate is seven percent. You know, if they use, if they use, you know, conventional discount, you know, conventional assumptions. I mean, I have no idea what the number would be. Chuck, you probably one much bigger than one ninety one, it's three hundred, you know. And so, so no one's using seven percent. So I look, it's again, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's in the report.
Sure.
The good news is, as Steve said, you know, back, I don't know how long ago was we formed the Audit Committee. We had a lot of hair back. Sentence in the report that sort of said something. And and this is like, was the biggest liability, the biggest wealth. It's a big issue.
Potentially.
Now we have, now we have complete disclosure about it. When we go for bond rating, the bond, the bond readers understand that the full disclosure, early on, we were very concerned that you, as a town, were issuing bonds without good disclosure. You know, and so we got that fixed. So they understand that. Now it's the thing, and you can say, well, it doesn't matter because part of state, no, it does matter. Big time for you, if you know, because. you, if, you know, because you never know what tomorrow holds and so. So we got that fixed. And we're, so the best place we are, and it's not the Board of Education's problem. I'm sure the Board of Education would love it to be funded, as would we. It's just a collective problem we all have, so.
Thank you for the explanation.
Bill, I'm sorry, I have to ask this question. It's unrelated to the pension issue. The debt per capita, if I heard you correctly, we're number one in the state for that, correct?
Well, we, I said that a little low, because I haven't actually checked that recently. We haven't checked that recently. But a year or two ago, when we checked that, we were number one in the state of all the towns, debt per capita. We did pay it down, you know, we got down to 98 million, but we've just issued another 25 million, which brings us back up. So, you know, my, so, you know, okay, maybe we're not number one, so we're the top five, you know, 160 towns, 180 towns. Doesn't matter, right?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we are definitely top five, could be top three.
So what challenges and risks, if any, does that present in the short term, midterm and a long term?
Well, it's a, you know, so some would say we have good bond ratings, and, you know, that's not impressive to me, you know?
Me either.
Because, you know, if you're in finance, you know, it's not, not impressive to me. The bond, the bond ratings impact the interest, that's good. But, you know, the bond ratings as it relates to the level of debts, not impressive to me, okay? And so there is a philosophical discussion, which is, well, we're building something today. And so for the people of the future, so shouldn't they be the ones that pay for that? And that's a philosophical discussion. And I think if you fall into that camp, that next, when you do your trust and your estate work, your own personal family, you should keep the assets for yourself and give all the debt to your kids. That would be the philosophy that would follow. So, so, but again, you know, but it is something you have to deal with. But I think that's above the pay grade of the Audit Committee.
Yeah.
That's really something for the Finance Committee. Todd is doing a terrific job in this regard. He's very focused on it. He, I want, you know, but to be keeping it down. But I do think that that's something that is a big question for the town to really deal with. But it's not an Audit Committee question. It's just our question, really quality or type.
I think we weren't worried when, you know, capital's cheap. I said, it's nothing as much to worry about when capital's cheap. But now, us capital becomes more expensive than us when you don't want it.
Yeah, so it's.
The positive side of that story, though, as we move through it, I mean, there are towns, we may be in the top five, but as you look at towns, 169 towns in Connecticut, many of them would wish that they had all new schools already. We've done all of our schools. We've done Town Hall. You know, we've done the Fire Department. We're about to do the Police Department. I mean, there's not a lot of things left. We've done our, you know, done a great job with our parks. So where we are is pretty healthy from, from that standpoint. We don't have a lot of huge things out in the future, although, you know, you never know. But.
I, I agree. I also, again, I think, you know, when capital's cheap, that's the time to make the investment, which is, I think, what we've been doing. I, I'm not saying it's a bad decision or a good decision. I'm just trying to understand the decision. But um, and it's something good to know. Sorry. Yeah.
No, I apologize. I just think that, at least for the past handful of years I've been on the Town Council, it's like, it's constant. We've just been very high in our, our debt per capita. And it's like, you know, I don't see it going down. And I think this has historically been an issue with New Canaan. So, you know, we pile on debt. I think whether we have very low interest rates or high interest rates, that's just the way it is. You know, and then when I tie this into the general fund discussion, when I see X amount of millions more than are not needed in that fund, that causes me additional, you know, additional concern. So I think these issues are kind of tied and related. And I get, I get it. It's beyond the purview of the Audit Committee. But I just at least wanted that very succinct discussion you just laid out there. And I think it's important for the town to know where we are in terms of our debt, irrespective of, I think, the interest rates.
There's different philosophies as you go about it. But, you know, but, but, but when you're talking about that, you know, it's not just the buildings of the library and the, and the schools, different things, but it's, it's the roads, which, you know, need to be repaired. I mean, there's a lot of things that will put more demand on the system for debt. And, you know, so there's only only two ways of doing it, right? You just either say, no, we're not going to fill that hole, or you raise, or you raise taxes.
But the question, though, is, every other town in the state has roads, needs schools, needs police buildings, needs to fund all their operating expenses, all of their capital projects. That's the difference, is why is it that we are, which we have all the same things that other towns need, at the, at the top of the spectrum? And that's just a longer term issue, I think. And I know rich towns would always talk about this in our five-year capital plan and managing our costs. So again, it's beyond the purview of committee. I just, it's a larger discussion that we need to continue to have and look at it.
I think it's, I think it's, you know, I think from our standpoint, we just wanted, because, you know, it goes back to the risk and reputation, when we were at the point where we had, you know, deficiencies in our accounting system, deficiency in our accounting system and material weaknesses. I mean, that was reputational for the town. And that would have impacted our bond offerings and forming the Audit Committee and, you know, and the cooperation of the number of first selectmen, you know, Kevin Now and the ones before them, the Board of, we got through that together. And, and, you know, so, but nonetheless, the risk is important for us. And, and if you, if you're an auditor, and you do an analytic review of 100, we have 160 towns or 180, 160?
160.
If you're an auditor, and you do an analytic review of 160 points on the graph, and you are number one, you know, that's an item to be focused on.
Yeah, but in.
You can cut that, you can, you can, you can analyze it however you want. That's an item to be focused on. It doesn't mean it's wrong. It's something to be focused on.
Well, I'm all for trying to work it down, but I do think it's fair to keep in mind that debt per capita is only one way to look at it. I mean, you can look at it compared to income, capacity to repay, wealth.
You should look at it like a company would, debt, debt to their ability to generate EBITDA. That's our EBITDA, which is our ability to, for the taxpayer to pay for it is very high.
Also, $13 million of AM on an annual basis is, is pretty, $13 million. You said we just 25, but they're paying down 13 million.
13 principal.
Yes. I'm not sure I agree, Mark, with the question on EBITDA, but that's another, that's another, I, I agree with the concept.
Yeah, well, I was.
But I'm not sure I agree with the, the EBITDA in the sense of the ability of the taxpayers to pay for it. When you look at the changing base of the taxpayers in the town, given the number of condominiums and the number of low-income housing and, you know, you know, so I, I think the demographics of the town are changing dramatically, which is, you know, which is something that has gone into the, you know, the thought process that we use when we look at the risk here. It's a significant issue. So, but, but it's, but, so, this is a big question that you all should be studying. That's all we're just trying to say.
Good point. Fair point.
Thank you. Well, you turned a happy story into a mystery novel now. It was a happy story, and now you.
Yeah.
We turned it.
I just waited, if I walk on.
Thank you once again, guys. All right, moving on. Well, we need to. I think we talked about in the past, haven't we, that we, we accept the report as opposed to, we accept delivery of the report as opposed to the contents, because we haven't had a chance to.
So now there's three things. We approve, accept.
Well, Jimski, you're, you're the new rich townsman, Jimski. So how should we phrase this resolution?
This says approval.
However, Bill thinks we should.
Of course, to consider it.
I'm not sure, I'll leave it up to those of you who know this, you know, somebody besides the Audit Committee's got to raise.
Yes, they do.
We.
So we accept.
Accept.
We accept it.
So, so we need a, we need a motion.
Motion to accept audit financial statements.
Second, Luca's second. All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you again for coming out. Linda, thank you. I can't thank Linda enough. All right.
Wait, don't we have Linda again for budget?
Oh, yeah. But you, you went, you left too fast, Linda. Sorry. Number eight on the agenda is our budget discussion, upcoming budget plan, schedule and guidance.
Kevin kind of talked about this.
Yeah.
We, we did do an accelerated budget development this year. We met with all the departments. The budgets have all been submitted. We've, we've put them together. And so we were looking at the impact of the requests on, on the mill rate. We've got an updated, not updated, projections on, on grand list, which is, we're working with a 1% projection at this time, but we'll get a firmer number, I believe. Yeah, in the next couple of weeks, we'll know, once the appeals process is complete. And so, but we are on schedule. It'll go to the selectmen towards the end of January, and then it'll make its way to the Board of Finance, and then it'll make its way for your decision and rate sending. But so far, it's, it's progressing well. I think Kevin will agree. And we're on target. But that's kind of where, where we are with the budget, with the budget process right now.
Is that budget, that 1% increase in the budget?
No.
No, 1% increase on the grand list.
Okay, got it. Got it. Sorry.
And we did have, and I think one of the things that the Board of Finance set out last year was to start having, obviously, Board of Ed is a, you know, over half of the, of the general fund budget. And the plan last year, the agreement last year was to start having discussions earlier and not to wait until January when the budget is presented. And I believe we had a meeting last week, last week or this week, with the Board of Ed. So we're, we're starting to work with the Board of Ed to look at the numbers. As I mentioned, we're looking at health insurance, because we're self-funded, where they are with that. But, but I think it's, I think the process is, is, is well. It's, it's a good process. And we keep improving on the process. And so the town and the Board of Ed are working closely on the budget. And we started working earlier, collaboratively on that process.
Great. Great. Thank you, Linda. So we'll expect, I'm sure, I'm sure the Board of Finance have guidance coming out very soon.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. All right, number nine, American Rescue Act, ARPA. We need an update on ARPA. I can read this. An update and approval, Board of Selectmen, American Rescue Plan Relief Funds Recommendations, including premium pay for town employees, volunteers, BOE teachers and staff directed by the Board of Selectmen and superintendent of schools, Brian Lutzey, for a thank you bonus for their help, support and service during COVID pandemic. So, Mark, you have the floor.
Okay, so maybe a history lesson. We, a couple of months ago, the Subcommittee put a list together of items that we thought we would approve and move quickly through the process. You'll see on your tablets, under the other requests, there's, as well as the things that we're moving forward here, a list. This is not our list. This is, I believe, the first, the Board of Selectmen's list. But last, or two weeks ago, I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, the Board of Selectmen passed the following items, as you'll see on your tablets, which then went to the Board of Finance. Excuse me. Yesterday, the Subcommittee also approved these to move forward. They went to the Board of Finance, and they are now before us, and I'll read them off. And then also, if anyone wants any color, but the NC TV, we, that was on our list, and then the Board of Selectmen approved 70,000. Wade New Park Conservancy, something we, on our list, they approved the $250,000 parking fund, that's reimbursement, that's $150,000. That was also on our list to move forward quickly, as was the emergency generator, which is $250,000. The Live New Canaan project support is 60,000. That was on our list, but something we needed more information on. I believe we all got an email today regarding that, which shed some more light on it. I think it was from, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Board of Realtors, yeah, the Board, from the Board of Realtors. So hopefully, but we're, if you'd like to discuss more, the Wade New Park outdoor bathrooms,
that was there, and the Board of Selectmen approved $250,000. So these are all the items that they approved, just to be clear. And the premium pay, which is $725,000 roughly, that we asked for a lump sum number. As you recall, the Board of Finance approved the premium pay for the teacher, for the Board of Ed. I think it was probably a couple of months now. We wanted a full package for not only the Board of Ed, but for the town employees as well. This is the full number. And then lastly, the sidewalk green links, which was $300,000, also on our Subcommittee, the list that we presented on either the last Town Council or the one prior. So this is what was passed last week. It totals just over $2 million. Recall, we have $6 million of ARPA funding.
And these are, these are the, these were the things that we're pressing.
Yeah.
And, you know, for those of, those of the public who, who were just tuning in, we've, we've actually gone through an extensive list here. So this is where we are right now.
So. So the goal, the goal is to, you know, to approve the total dollar value, which is on your tablets here. So.
That's a $2,055,000.
Any, yeah, any thoughts?
What I would like to, to, to approve or to vote for would be the total number, but adjusting the 240 municipal plus town employees and bring that bonus structure to equal that of the Board of Ed, which is $1,000 per person, wherever that money is taken out from, from the list.
So we can approve, so the, what we agreed to was the, the same process that we always agreed to, which is, you know, it goes from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance and then to us. So tonight, we are looking at these numbers the way they are. So we're not going to add anything, we're not adding anything at this juncture. And we're going to leave it up to, we're going to, at this point, we're going to have to leave it up to the, to the, to the boards to get this right. So.
But Steve, if I may, we're, we're voting on the total.
Right.
The, the way that it's appropriated on each line item can be adjusted. So wherever that money goes to, I think that the bonus for the, for the town employee should be the same.
Just a quick clarification. The, the way that the Board of Education structured it was that our certified staff, who really picked up on March 13th of 2020, worked all the way through the 2020 closure and what have you. And, you know, everything they've done, certified staff, it's $1,000. The non-certified staff is $500. So, not that they work less hard, but in the closure, their experience was different, you know? So we felt like that distinction was an important one to make, given the, the differing experiences of our certified staff versus non-certified.
And I'm wondering why we didn't do that for the town employees as well. Because I, I think, you know, to your point, you, you painstakingly figured out who should be getting the 1,000, who should be getting the 500, not because anyone didn't do a good job, but because you didn't want to diminish the folks that did above and beyond. And you gave them more. That's what a manager does. You figure out who should be getting more. I guess, I think we should be giving a bonus. I think it diminishes town employees if we're giving some of them, who should be getting the most, should be getting 1,000, similar to what your highest tier folks are getting. They're only getting 750. I don't think that's fair. And then maybe other folks, again, I'm not saying people didn't work hard, but there are going to be people who did more. And so I think, again, I don't think everyone should get the same trophy. And, and we should probably, I, it would be great if we could have done it that way. We didn't, or it hasn't been done that way. Is, I, I want to make a suggestion. I don't even know if I can do this, but I'm going to make a suggestion. Is there a way to give everyone 500, so that they have something for Christmas, and then decide in January who should get the extra 500 or 250? Because, you know, as Town Council, we can take away, we just can't get it, right? Can we do that?
To answer, to answer the question, Rita, I mean, we've, we've met extensively, you know, behind the scenes, trying to, trying to have this considered or reconsidered. And at the end of the day, my respect for the process outweighed the trying to figure out who gets what. And, and this is supposed to be a, you know, I view it as a very, very happy moment at the holidays. And we're, we're looking at this as a, as a thank you and a bonus for, for these folks. And while I think we'd all like to give the max, we can't start the process over again. We are here tonight where we are. There, there may be some regrets, but we want to get this money in the hands of the deserving folks as quickly as possible. And the only way to do that is to approve the lump sum. You, you know, we can talk about our disappointment tonight, but it's not really going to do much more than make a good thing.
I so agree with you. It should be a good thing. I guess we're creating, we're creating to, a two-tier system here, where certain people, where, where the, you know, folks in education are getting 1,000, police officers or whoever are only getting 750. So we're, I think it's, we're creating a two-tier system here. That's not, that's not, I don't know if that's the right word, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think perception, that's great. I, I think we're diminishing folks that, you know, worked a bit harder. So that's, again, and, and this may not be, we may not be able to do it, but that's my strong opinion on this.
Thank you. Yeah. This is a point of order. Maybe we should have a, a resolution to, to adopt the 2,555 and then, and then discussion after that. Isn't that the way we normally do it?
Yeah, we could do that. If you want to make, you want to make.
Yeah, I would move that we approve the 2 million.
Yeah, I would move that we approve the $2,055,050. And then I think that leaves open the possibility that after we vote, well, certainly after we, after we move this, we can have discussion, but after we vote on it, we can still express our views as to what else should happen.
I have a question before we vote, if I could.
No, we're not voting.
Oh, no.
We're just moving the motion so we can have discussion.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
So Tom made the motion, Mark will second. Now the floor is open. The $2,055 is on the floor. We will have to vote on it. So the, but we can have discussion prior to vote. So I, you know, Kevin, if you want to just briefly, you know, go through the.
No, I would just remind people that the Board of Selectmen is responsible for the management of personnel.
Right.
And we debated in our management group first, and then at the Board of Selectmen meeting in executive session, we looked at doing a bifurcated process. And, you know, there were a lot of variation in terms of people's experience during last year. We did not want to, you know, end up with a bifurcated process, just like the superintendent made some judgments about non-certified personnel. This is the judgment the Board of Selectmen made. And I think there is a bifurcated process. The town employees generally make two-thirds of what the Board of Education employees make. So that already exists. So.
Yeah. And I mean, and Kevin will attest to the fact that he heard loud and clear from me on this already. And it's, as I said earlier, I, I respect the process of how we get here. And, you know, that's, you know, I'm all about the process, unfortunately. So that actually is, is higher than anything else here. So go ahead, Hillary.
I first want to thank all of our town employees and our teachers and administration that worked through COVID. I think this is a wonderful thing that our town is doing. And they deserve every penny that they get. And my great hope is that they get this, they will get this in paychecks before Christmas. Is that, is that true? Okay, good. Fair. I, I really do hope that there is a reconsideration about upping some town employees' premium pay after the holidays. I think that there are some that come to my mind that perhaps deserve a little bit of a bump. So in the holiday spirit, Kevin, I would hope that Mr. Moynihan, that perhaps that could be considered. That's all. I, I want to make this a happy occasion. I thank them so much. I understand.
I should mention too, we've already done other premium bonus or bonuses for last year.
Great.
For some select groups. That's not part of this.
Great.
That was done last year.
Right. Fantastic. But again, I hope that every employee knows how valued they are, how much we appreciate all the work that they've done for all of us. I've been the beneficiary of a ton of work, particularly from the Health and Human Services Department. My children have too, which I can't even begin to thank them enough. So I hope that in that spirit, everybody, you know, can use this and enjoys it and enjoys their holiday. But I, you know, I, I really do hope that we can make everyone whole and happy. That's my only hope.
Thank you. Maria, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not normally the everyone gets a trophy kind of person, but I mean, I, part of me, this is just a suggestion and everyone can do what you've decided to do. Or, you know, just take the whole amount and divide it by the number of people and give everyone the same amount. So that's just a suggestion. I think everyone deserves, you know, everyone worked hard. I think it's actually probably more work to decide who worked harder. You know, I, I just think that's a tough, it'll come back to you.
And that's what.
That's what he says. Yeah, exactly. So that's it.
Can I ask Dr. Lettsi, what are the numbers? I'm just curious. How many are certified and non-certified and how many are getting in the, in the education sphere? How many are getting?
Just ballpark.
Yeah.
About 430 or so on the certified side and about 240 or so on the non-certified.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? We also have, obviously, NC 79, Wade New Park Conservancy, the Parking Fund, Emergency Generator, Live New Canaan.
Live, Live New Canaan, just to recall, was not on our original priority list. I, I think we've gotten some additional color, which we were needing. So, you know, my, my recommendation, you know, obviously the Subcommittee moved all of these items forward.
Right.
Right. So, and Rita, you, you serve on TDAC.
Yeah.
I know, I know Live New Canaan has been a part of that initiative. You wanted to speak for a minute about how that's.
Yeah. So I sat through, I just, it's funny because I just got onto TDAC and now Town Council, but I did sit through a presentation by the Noble Group about Live New Canaan. And just to preface it, I have 25, over 25 years of marketing experience. The last two years I've been a digital marketing consultant. I kind of know what I'm talking about when it comes to, you know, digital marketing. Just, I've got that, you know, the background and then experience. It's not, Live New Canaan, right? It's not perfect. There are some things that, you know, we could do to improve that website, but do I think it is a very valuable tool for this town that's already established that we can then build off of to drive, you know, to help drive folks to New Canaan, to support our businesses, to prop up our, you know, property values? Absolutely. I think it has a lot of potential. And rather than start from scratch, because I think it is, it's a very valuable tool that we should be using, to start from scratch would be a, a lot more money and a lot more resources and a lot more investment. You know, there, there was, I guess there was an article in New Canaan, which I didn't originally have access to, but I, I got it. It, there were some inaccuracies. Number one, it mentioned 10,000, an email list of 10,000 people. It failed to mention an email list of 20,000 people that are outside of New Canaan that, you know, get regularly get newsletters from Live New Canaan, propping up our, you know, our, our talking about and promoting our town. It's number one. Number two, it diminished the convert or the click-through rate. It mentioned a very low click-through rate of 4.44 or something like that. That's actually an industry. If you look at standards, if you look at industry standards for click-through rates, that's the same or better than similar industries. So it's actually a very, very positive click-through rate for a website. So if you, if you understand the full context of what Live New Canaan is and what it could be, I think, you know, it's, it's a very valuable tool for us to be using and improving upon. And that, that's, you know, that's my professional opinion. And I think, you know, we're in the 21st century. Everyone's, you know, researching towns online. And if we're not, you know, right there, doing our due diligence and, and being, you know, online and, and promoting our town, we're going to be lost. So I think, I think it's important that we do support that, whether it's ARPA funds or whether it's however we want to do it. I think it's a very important tool that we should be supporting in some way.
Rita, is it correct to say that Live New Canaan is more than just a website?
Yes, it's a website. There's newsletter. So, okay, so.
I think of a website as a place people go, but we're pushing out information.
So, yes. So we also, they've also gathered, so there's a newsletter you can sign up for. So that's where I talked about the email list. So there's 10,000 people within New Canaan that, that signed up for the newsletter. There are 20,000 people in New York City. And I have a friend of mine who's in Pound Ridge who like signed up and I didn't even know that, like Pound Ridge, Wilton. So surrounding communities to try to draw on those people to let them know about events, to promote, you know, our town. So that's a very, that's a 20,000. It's a very, very valuable email list in itself. And those are people that signed up. We didn't buy that list or they didn't buy that list. That was people that signed up. I think we could do a better job of, of, of putting a call to action. Again, this is one of my thoughts more prominently to get more people to sign up for this newsletter. You know, I think there, you know, I have 10 suggestions that we could do to make this even better and more valuable, but I would not throw it out the door. I, I would not, you know, start from scratch and I would not miss this opportunity to, to, to do something more with it. I think the other thing that's different is Realtors had been sort of in charge of this website and they were using it for their purposes. I think when we invest money into it, then we should have more of a say about how, you know, what this website should be promoting and doing. And I think that would be important is that we're directing the Noble Group toward objectives that our town find important.
Is that the plan, Kevin, that, that what had been managed by Board of Realtors will now be managed by the town?
We will provide content whenever.
Still Board of Realtors.
So who will then support it after this money runs out?
They will continue to support it as they have for the last three years.
Right.
This is just to supplement them to keep this going. I mean, Nancy Greenspan, who's on this call, has volunteered most all of her time to run this. And she's a PR professional, had a whole career in New York doing this.
And that, and that would be one thing that I would suggest maybe doing a little differently, if, if we wanted to really utilize this, this website is to, is to be more, I think, whether or not, not to manage it, but to provide more, you know, content, to direct them into other areas that we want to promote for New Canaan. And I think, you know, with our investment of $60,000, that, that should entitle us to more, I think, input into what is on the site and what it's doing.
Yeah.
But just to be clear, originally, we didn't, the, the Subcommittee needed more information or did meet the parameters because we didn't want to support ongoing operational costs of an organization. To say that, you know, we weren't filling a hole, but just supporting operations that they're going to have to eventually continue on with once the, the town money or the ARPA money.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
And just to answer, Mark, I didn't really answer your question, Tom. So it's a website. It's the newsletter, which is 30,000, you know, people strong. There's also social media. So there's Twitter and Facebook and there's Instagram. So, I mean, it's, it's a multifaceted.
Wall Street Journal, NPR.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, like I said, I think there are ways that we can improve upon it, but I think it's a great opportunity for the town to utilize.
So if the Board of Realtors is going to continue ownership of this project, I, I, I'd just be curious to see who the outreach is to. I mean, Rita and I talked about this earlier. One of my big ideas, I guess, or things that I'm interested in is, is diversity in the town. So we always talk about diversity in the schools and we talk about diversity. And so I would be interested if the Board of Realtors is using this, you know, I hear Wall Street Journal, I hear this, but New Canaan has kind of always, the Realtors have always reached out to like the Upper East Side and published in the Wall Street Journal and published in sort of the same publications. But if we're going to do something new and invest in something, I would like to see it go out to a little bit more diverse neighborhoods and try and increase the diversity in this town. There's people who can afford to live in this town that don't look like all of us necessarily. And we could be doing a better job of reaching out into more diverse neighborhoods to recruit, not recruit, that sounds like we're recruiting for a cult, but like to reach out to people to move here, to, to welcome them to our town. So I would be interested in seeing if we're going to invest in this company and this Noble Group, which I don't know that much about. Yeah, Noble House Media, sorry. I'd like to see them do something more innovative than just publishing ads in the same publications we've been doing. I'd like to see that, that, you know, that we're really utilizing them for some more different innovative ways of, of reaching potential home buyers or home renters here. That isn't just retreading the same things that we've done in the past. So.
And that goes to having more input.
Or not. I mean, or, you know, I don't know that we want to take ownership of this necessarily. I don't know that giving ARPA money entitles us to do that or that anybody in the town, who's going to do that? Is it going to be TDAC's responsibility? Is it going to be your responsibility? Is it going to be Town Council's? I don't, that's the, that's the kind of question mark I have with this. And whether giving ARPA money really, if it is appropriate for the town to take ownership of something like this, or are we really giving it to nonprofits, to these entities so that they can get a leg up and do things that COVID might have prevented them from, from doing or developing. But to the extent that we can say to the Board of Realtors, like, hey, these are some mandates or these are some things that we are interested in doing as a town, could you work this into some sort of business plan?
And that's the input.
A valid input.
Right. I think, I think that's the input.
Yeah, I, I'm sure that, yeah, that would be great.
They have focused on diversity as well.
Great. Perfect.
And I would define that as.
I just wanted to get it on the record.
Yeah. No, I, I would define that, what, everything you just said is input.
Yeah.
Whether, you know, they can still manage it, but we could provide the input. But you ask, you, you bring up a good question. Who decides what that input is? And if we decide that it's about like supporting businesses and nonprofits.
Yeah.
Then those are the people that, you know, maybe Laura Bud of Chamber of Commerce should have more input. And NCC, the, you know, New Canaan Community Foundation, might be the people that would provide input. I mean, I think we could make that call, or not we, the town could make that call. But I guess to, to the question of, is this a valuable asset? Is it worth the $60,000? My opinion is it is, whether or not it comes from ARPA funds, that might be a different question, but I, I do think it's valuable.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Which question, what is, do we know what the $60,000 is, is that just for?
That's what they pay annually to run the program.
So this is just for one year?
Right. But they have supported it for the last three.
So what's going to happen next year?
They will continue to support it. This is just to supplement their funding that they put forward for Star.
Is this replacing their fee this year?
No, it's helping to pray their cost.
Does it have a contract? Do we like, was this just here 60 grand and have at it? It seems.
Turn around on here. It's just receiving funds.
I mean, I love what you explained, Rita. That was very educational and I'm for this, but, I mean, if we're just throwing money out there and that's not tied to any binding obligations or, you know, expressions of the performance, you know, any promises of a performance, I mean, seems a little too loose. And maybe we can tighten that process a little bit from, and this is a corporate, like a corporate entity. This, this person running this operation in Darien. I, I don't know. I'm just, like I said, I'm for it, but.
Yeah. Can we get her to comment? Certainly, the Board of Realtors has an agreement with this firm.
Tim or Nancy, if you're on, could one of you unmute for us?
Hi, I'm here. It's Annalisa Brown. I'm the president of the Board of Realtors.
Hi, Annalisa.
How are you?
Good.
So we, we do have an agreement with Noble House. We, we pay them about $60,000 a year for the program as it exists right now. The 60,000 that we were asking in the ARPA funds is really to defray 20,000 per year for three years. So we're looking at this over a three-year period of time, not to just cover one year. And the money would be coming to the Board of Realtors, not to Noble House. So that's just a point I'd like to make clear as well, because if for any reason, you know, Noble House were for some reason no longer able to service the campaign and we had to choose someone else, we would use those funds obviously for another vendor. But at this point, we're extremely satisfied with Noble House. They do an excellent job. I think Rita did a really good job explaining the, the variety of aspects to the program. It brings, you know, 30,000 organic visitors across all platforms each month, which is extraordinary. We have a searchable database of, you know, 300 businesses in town, restaurant shops, nonprofits. So while it was initially designed to sort of encourage the real estate market when our market was flat three or four years ago, it's really evolved. As we all know, the real estate market has exploded over the last 12 to 18 months. And so it's been a great opportunity to highlight, you know, everything else about the town as well.
Two quick thoughts. One is that it would be nice, as part of the ARPA package, to have something that benefits businesses in town. And so this sounds like the most credible thing that I've heard of so far. That's one thing. The other thing is that we've, we've been comfortable as a Town Council for years to, to have partnership agreements with, you know, with, so in this case, the Board of Realtors pays two-thirds or 75% or whatever it is, and, and we pay 20 per year. That, that's not unusual for what, compared to what we've done in the past.
The one other thing I would just want to mention is that we are a nonprofit as, as well. We, we don't, you know, make any money off of any of this either. You know, we're here, as a board, we're here to serve our members, but in this case with Live New Canaan, you know, we have the ability to serve the entire town is how we see it.
Rising tide lifts all boats, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to compliment the content that, that is out there. I've, I've had, I've followed Live New Canaan on Instagram and I think on Twitter. And they're constantly posting great photos of New Canaan and promoting our town. And that's really what we want to do. There aren't too many arms of this town that actually promote New Canaan like this. I mean, this is, this is putting it out there, showing great parks, great pictures of everything that we do, moments, Fourth of July, Memorial Day parades, sunsets, I mean, just some beautiful shots of, of, of who we are and what we are. And it's, to me, getting, getting marketing out there about New Canaan and attracting people, whether you're, you know, on the West Side, East Side, wherever you are, and having people say, hey, I'd like to go visit New Canaan as a result of some of this. I mean, even if we, if we sold three or four houses as a result of this, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. So.
Yeah. As long as you have an opportunity to optimize it, because there are concerns that I have.
Yes, yes. So any other comments? There, you know, obviously we have $2,055,000 on the floor. You know, it, there are other items here as well. So Tiger's on the call if we want to ask about the outdoor bathrooms, the skating rink is proceeding. So we really haven't gotten into that either. So if anybody, does anybody else have any questions? No, no, no. But this, the, those bathrooms, all-season bathrooms, you can see that they're renovating for all-season use, including, you know.
Okay, Tiger, is, is this the?
Okay. Tiger, is, is this the, the potting shed outside of the powerhouse or the other one?
This is for the potting shed, the area at the playhouse, at the powerhouse. The, uh, sorry, the bathrooms at, near the ice rink, we've already installed heaters inside. So they'll be, they'll be able to, to stay open year round. It won't be overly warm, but the pipes won't freeze.
Okay. So this is not the pet, potting shed.
It's.
There's both.
Powerhouse theater.
It's only the powerhouse. It's got nothing to do with the, the ice rink. I think that that was a.
That was. I think Penny's question is, with regard to the powerhouse, what happens to the potting shed?
Thank you. So that's, that was the next part of the discussion. So last year, the boards were nice enough to give us $40,000 towards the design of bathrooms, a renovation and, and a design for bathrooms inside the potting shed. We hired an architect to do that. The town players came forward and were looking to bring forward a renovation project to expand their lobby and then do some work inside. We need to do some work inside there as well for ADA bathrooms, which we had been pursuing. None of the plans were meeting up to standard for them because they were actually going to lose office space, lose lobby space when we were trying to upgrade the bathrooms. So they came forward with an idea to upgrade and renovate the, the powerhouse itself. So then they contracted with APS, which is the, the architectural firm that we had done. So there would be a synergy. Similar, looking at the entire parcel or the entire complex, we should say. And they came back with the idea of putting the bathrooms as an extension of the existing powerhouse to the south, where they're, right now where their, their props room are in their, and their costumes, building out those walls towards the parking lot to accommodate bathrooms and then renovating the potting shed itself for utilization for educational classes for the, for the town players, for rehearsal space, maybe a black box theater, things of that nature, and then making it more of a campus feel. Fixing the patio inside, plantings, things of that nature, then make it a nice overall complex. When we asked for a cost analysis between doing just renovating the potting shed with bathrooms or taking care of the town's responsibility of the potting shed based upon our lease with the town players, which is basically the envelope and putting a floor back in since the floor had collapsed. Everything structural, nothing, no fit out inside, and then building a separate bathroom, this expansion that we were talking about. The numbers came in at 260,000, right? 110,000 to do the renovations of the potting shed and 150 for the bathrooms. Very, very close to the 250 that we had earmarked in our fiscal 23 budget. So that's the money that's going forward, whether it's utilized to renovate the potting shed and put bathrooms there, excuse me, or renovate the potting shed, put the bathrooms elsewhere and allow the town players to utilize the, the potting shed. Those decisions are for others. The Park and Rec Commission did approve their, that possibility. They, the town players by their lease have, have to go to the commission first. The commission did approve it at their last meeting. If this idea of utilizing the potting shed for other than bathrooms and then putting bathrooms adjacent to that area. But then the rest of that decision-making will have to either, will, will fall to the Board of Selectment and the Town Council, since it's a use of a town facility. But the monies themselves, whether they're for a bathroom in the potting shed or a bathroom adjacent to it, and the renovation of the potting shed are virtually the same at 250, 260,000 dollars.
That's kind of where I was going with the tiger. It just seems a little premature since, you know, all this moving around where the bathrooms are or aren't and what happens with the powerhouse and, you know, who's managing what part of what seems a little premature for me and.
Yes. But at, at the same time, we're, I'm going to have to do the work regardless, right? If you want bathrooms, I gotta do the work, you know, whether they put them in the body shed or not. And then regardless, I got to renovate the potting shed at some point in time anyways, or we should, I should say, renovate the potting shed at some point in time. So the, and then with that said, the, the, the projects are all separable, right? So the lobby and the expansion that the, the town players want to do has nothing to do with the other two works. The possible works that, that go on. You could do the expansion of the bathrooms off of the, off of the costume area separate from the renovation of the potting shed and that renovation of the potting shed doesn't have to include bathrooms at that time or can include it. And then you don't, you, there might be a synergy together with one contractor working on the parcel, but they don't have to be run together.
Okay, that's fine. And I thank you for the explanation, but because we didn't have it, you know, and I, where, where the bathrooms, you know, I know that's why you're here. So that's why we're getting it now, not earlier for us. When we were discussing it the other day, I had not a clue where the bathrooms were.
So if I, if I understand the, Mark, if I understand the order of battle, the, the 250 was part of the ARPA package before this new complexity arose, right? So, so we, we, we were put in the position of having to manage a little bit of flexibility here because it was a good, it's a good idea, but before we approve the use, we probably would like more information, drawings and such.
Yes.
We're moving buildings or authorities over buildings.
That may not impact some of your renovation of the exterior or you, you, you probably want to put the floor in, no matter what the use is. But, um, but at some point, we, we need more information, I think, before we expand our campus, right?
The, the powerhouse has, I, I believe they sent a letter to the councilman, to the council themselves, and then they want to get in front of the, the council at some point in time, or Selectmen Board of Finance and the council, hopefully in January. As this rolls forward, you know, with this idea of their expansion of their lobby and then this idea of, of utilization of the potting shed for other than bathrooms.
Okay. But we might want to think of those as independent issues though.
Yeah. Horse before the cart, you know?
We're just giving the money for the projects. We're not giving the shed to the theaters.
Right.
I know. I was just saying that it was hardly cleared until just now.
Right.
Yeah. At, at present, we will, we won't go forward. We would not proceed forward with either project without a definitive answer from the boards and the council.
Perfect.
Thank you, Tiger. And Tiger, just real quick, and this is lightning round, 30 seconds. Sidewalk green links, name the sidewalks affected. 30, you have 30 seconds.
Just one. It's on a, it's on an old Stanford Road from Bristow around the corner to Gower Road.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Well, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just one. Bristow side, which depending on how you look at it, it goes north to west.
Got it.
What an accident waiting to happen.
All right. Great. All right.
Before we wrap up, I'd like to say one more, one more thing about the premium pay.
Yeah.
If that's all right.
Okay.
So I, I definitely, I definitely support approving the 2,055 premium pay package. I'd like to get it paid out as structured because there's been a lot of detailed work that's gone into it. So I'm all for that, but, but I, but I'm not ready to, and I realize that we are not, we're not the first selectmen's office. We're not the, the people that manage compensation or rewards. We don't understand whether it's better to give one, one dollar amount to one person and another. Having said that, you know, if, if this, if this line item for premium pay was a million dollars and that's probably more than enough to equalize the maximum to give everybody, you know, all, if the highest bonus for the best performing people in both groups is a thousand dollars, I would strongly advocate that we can afford that. We could have that kind of equity without a lot more money, without spending a lot more money. That would be a separate decision in the future. And it would be up to the Board of Selectmen as to whether they want to do that. But, but my perception is that I don't think the public would really like the notion, and if you want to think of it this way, it's, I think it's not unfair that the, that the least valuable COVID contribution made by any teacher is more important financially than the most valuable contribution of any other town employee. That just doesn't make sense. Now, I was impressed by Kevin's comment that town employees make less than teachers. On the other hand, these, you know, the, that, that's the only time somebody expressed a sense that these, these things should be pay related. It's not pay related for the teachers. So it seems to me a thousand dollars is a good number and this is incomplete. And I, I think that we ought to encourage Kevin not to intrude in his, in his executive responsibilities and authority, but to, to say that when, when you're ready to true this thing up and, and to me make, have it make more sense, I'm voting for that allocation, for that appropriation.
You said that much more eloquently than I did. So thank you.
You agree.
I agree.
Yeah. I mean, we did, we asked, we asked coming out of council to give us one lump sum, give it to us all at the same time. And, you know, at our meeting, we indicated that we wanted it to be equal to, but, you know, again, this is where we are. I, I can't disagree, Tom. I agree with what you said 100%, but this is where we are. We have 2,055,000 on the table. And we need to, we have, we have a motion and now we have a vote. So.
I, I, I agree with what Tom said. I think if I was a police officer or firefighter, Kevin, I respect everything you're saying, but I look at it with the teachers, what they did, right? In, in a good way. Because if, if, if Dr. Lutzey came in and said, look, you know what, it's going to be 750 across the board. That diminishes what the teacher's contribution and it gives greater value to those who may have not have contributed as much, right? And that's the same thing here. So if I was a police officer or E M T or firefighter or, you know, Tiger's people running the sewer plant. And I, I, if I got the, if everyone got a thousand, I know I would say, well, you know what? I don't love that everyone who didn't contribute like as much as I did got a thousand dollars, but I did get the top, top level. Whereas if I received 750 and I was, you know, a first responder, I'd say, wait a second. Why am I getting penalized here and not getting the top value dollar to make the other people who didn't, who didn't contribute as much value, I'm getting penalized. I know that that's how these frontline guys and women are looking at it. That's why I think we should reconsider. And I actually, I'm strongly voting, considering voting no on all of this because I just don't think it's right. I think, yes, I'd love the, everyone to have the money in their checks by Christmas, but if they knew that it was, it was going to be in the next payroll cycle, I think that would be fine too. So I don't know if you want to do a straw poll here on who's in favor of having a max $1,000 on the town side.
To do what I had suggested, like we can't do it that way. We can't parse out and say, because it's already been decided that was the number.
You know, again, Kevin, you know how I, I feel very strongly about this for $60,000 delta on, for, for 240 people and we have millions that we've just been given and we have, what's the balance if, if we were to prove this leftover?
Close to four.
It's just the equities are out of balance here. So that, that's how I feel. It's the collective decision to vote yes, and it is what it is. Okay. But that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mike. All right. That was outside of our conversation.
All right.
What are we doing? All right. So we have.
I think we need an up or down on, on this. And then we could do a straw poll if, if the motion succeeds.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Explain that again, what you just said.
We should vote on the, on the 2 million.
On the total amount.
Yes. Well, the whole thing.
Right. Yeah.
But understanding that the motion could fail, or if it succeeds, we can still do a straw poll. But I'd like to know, I think we should know, we, we have a motion on the floor. We should vote on it.
Yes.
I do. All right. So we're going to call the vote. It's 2,055,000. So you understand the motion? We had a motion from Tom, seconded by Mark. So all in favor? Raise your hand. Two, three, four, five. Oh, those opposed. One opposed. Yep. So it's a 11 to one. Motion passes. Okay. So again, the, you know, we do a straw poll, I guess. I mean, it's, we had, kind of had a straw poll the last time. I mean, it's, it's a, I don't see, I don't see really, it, it would have to go through the whole process again to get, get to us. So.
Don't you think the discussion is clear enough?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty clear. It's pretty.
Message to the first selectman that he could be Santa Claus.
Yeah.
And we were with our blessing.
We have people not to have. Exactly. That's what I was trying to say.
We're, we're, yeah, I think we're 100% behind the idea that if, if, if a miracle were to happen, we'd be 100%. So let's move on. All right.
Are we going to discuss the other requests as well or?
Oh, we just did.
Oh, the other ARPA request, the other ARPA request, on top of this, not, not at this meeting. I don't think you're ready for that yet. Are you or are you? Yes. We, yeah, we are moving on here. Uh, let's see. We have item number 10. So, what event? 220?
Oh.
I am Vivian Iran. I am so sorry. This is our opportunity to thank you and everything that the teachers have done. And we are so blessed to have such a great teaching. Bunch of teachers out there on behalf of the council, thank you for everything you've done. And we, we're, we're sending that money your way and please let everybody know how grateful we are for everything that the teachers have done, especially during such a tough time during COVID. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
We're very proud of the teachers and thank you all.
Thank you for sitting through our meeting. I apologize. I didn't see you right there. Thank you very much. I'm new at this. How long can I get to say that? A couple of weeks. Okay. Item number 10.
January, never done it in December, never done it forever. So you got 12.
Let me just quick. You wanted.
So I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify before we move on, under the other request, St. Aloisius request, it says school construction project. Can I just clarify that for a second?
Absolutely.
They are talking about expanding the school to add threes and fours. So they're adding about 40 slots of preschool, which I think is a high need thing in the town. And I think the timing is perfect. The timing of the ARPA funds is perfect to apply towards their capital costs of the construction. So I just want to put that out there that, you know, it's a great location. It is, you know, a religious institution, but they accept anyone. It's, there's no limits on who can go there. And I think supporting such, you know, and this is, the school's been there 65 years. The church has been there 100 years. You know, I think this is a prime time and they have, they're right in the center of town. They have a great relationship with the library and the school. So having three and four-year-olds exposed to programs in the library, they have a really good partnership in their programs. So I just want to change that on the, on the line item from school construction project to specifically adding preschool classes.
And just to be clear, that is not, that is the Board of Selectmen's list. We have our own list so that we can, you can. We'll get that on there. So that will, we've heard presentations from Nature Center and Y M C A sort of in that same category. So what we're saying here is that St. Aloisius would like to be considered inside of that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All right. 30 seconds. Then we mentioned that the Community Foundation was putting a questionnaire out to help us with the nonprofits. And they're currently, they currently have a questionnaire and I believe you have until January 15th, Tucker, if I'm right there, to submit. And the goal there is we don't really have a number. We're asking them to help us with the nonprofits. And so any number that you hear as to what the, the Community Foundation is getting is not an accurate statement. We're just getting input. And hopefully all the nonprofits that were impacted by COVID submit by January 15th and we'll have a better sense of that in the months ahead.
That's just a placeholder.
That, that, I would suggest that you not refer to that number as this is what.
Well, they submitted that.
Are the last submissions. Yeah.
Right, right. That, but we're not talking about St., we're talking about the.
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
I was actually surprised by that because I thought it was handing over the, you know, the reins in a way to them to decide, but I guess we'll talk about more as.
But we don't have any feedback. We don't have any feedback. I mean, we have not heard of, you know, the questionnaires have been told that, so.
And do we know what their criteria is that they put out for their?
It's on the, it's on the, it's in the questionnaire.
Press release, it's been submitted. There's a link that you can go on and look at the survey. The questions that were asked, we went around and looked at all the other communities and how they were asking of their nonprofits, and we put together the questions. And it's a lot of length, and it's on our website.
Thank you. All right, moving on here.
Thank you.
Item number ten, financial update. Joshua Kaufman, first time reporting here. Welcome, Joshua.
So I'll make this quick. So you should have on your tablets the November year-to-date budget to actuals. I think we're going, we're coming out of November pretty strong. Compared to last year, we're five million ahead in our revenue and one and a half million behind in our expenses. The highlights are really kind of ones that have been highlighted previously. The building permits are twice as high year-to-date as they were last year. Conveyance fees are on par with last year, but we've already hit, you know, we've hit over a hundred percent what we budgeted for this year's revenue. And as well as parking, obviously, is, is kind of coming back from zero, so that is pretty much the highlights.
Like you're all night for that, right?
Yeah. But I think we're, we're kind of at a good place. Right now, we're at about fifty-six percent of our projected revenue versus last year. We were at fifty-three percent and down a couple of percents from what our expenses were last year.
So we're tracking relatively.
I think so, yeah.
Where we were, yeah. I mean, that, this time of year is always, it's a good indicator to, to look at some of those, and, and it sounds like you've hit most of, most of what we've looked at in the past. Are there any questions from anybody as far as how we're tracking, or anything for Josh?
We, I don't have it on my iPad, but so we, it's fiscal. We're six months into our fiscal, is that, is that right, or?
This is five.
Five months, okay. So when you say fifty percent, I was just, I just wanted to make sure I knew what that, what the fiscal.
Right, so this, I think, is about forty percent of the year, but.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's month end, November, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Josh? Good. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
We were letting you off easy tonight, but it won't be this easy all the time. All right, thank you.
Good news.
All right, number eleven, reappointments. We have approval of the following appointments. Board of Finance, to confirm our reappointments of Todd Lavieri and Tom Schulte as regular members for four-year terms ending November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We also have reappointments of Colm Dobbin, Rob, Bob, Robert Hamel, Maria Weingarten as alternate, alternate members for two-year terms ending December first, two thousand twenty-three. You know, in the past, and, and I know, you know, Penny's been a big fan of this, is we usually bring the the folks in and we interview them, and we get into the nuts and bolts about their beliefs and what they had for breakfast.
The new guys, not to reappoint.
Right, but this, when you look at these names, and you look at, you know, names like Lavieri, Schulte, Dobbin, Hamel, Weingarten, I mean, we all know all these folks, and they are, we're so lucky to have these people serving on the Board of Finance. And, you know, I all, I mentioned Todd earlier tonight, the amount of time that, that Todd puts in above and beyond the meetings, just some of the things that he's doing, he's getting calls on vacation, he's weekends, you know, it, it's just amazing the amount of time he puts in. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but we have to vote on the reappointments. Does anybody else have anything to say about? Anybody, anybody?
These, these people are willing to do it. They have my support.
Yes, all right, so. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Right, Penny makes a motion, second, Christina, all in favor. All right, that is more than unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to the Audit Committee. We saw them tonight, confirm a reappointment of Ed Kangas for a three-year term ending December twenty, December first, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Kangas has been part of the, part of the Audit Committee from the beginning, and we're very, very lucky, yes, as we discussed tonight, having him, so. Who wants to make a motion?
That one, you can do one vote on them all.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, Housing Authority, reappoint Scott Hobbs, New Canaan Housing Authority, term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. And then we have an Ethics Reappointment of Robert Chopper, three-year term ending December twenty, December first, two thousand twenty-four. And that's it. So, you know, Penny, you know Scott as well, I mean.
For years. And look at what he's done for us.
Superstar.
Superstar.
I agree. And Robert Schott on the Ethics Board. Again, the Ethics Board is filling a very, very important role out there, and we're happy to have the Ethics Board as well, so. Want to make, anybody want to make a motion? And we'll move this.
So.
All right, we have Christina Maria seconds. This is the Audit Committee, Housing Authority, and Ethics Board, all in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number twelve, Subcommittee Assignments. The Subcommittee Assignments. I believe I've talked to everybody about this. We made the call, I actually made calls, everybody. We took requests for subcommittees. We managed to do the matrix, thanks to Penny and Mark's input. We were able to pretty much figure out how to slot everybody into what they were looking for, first, second, third choices. And we've got those, Tucker, I think we, I sent you the rough draft, but I, is that up on the?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay. So we'll get that up, but. Yeah, we can circulate a copy if you want. She'll just has one. All right, so I'll, I'll circulate it to everybody and get it out there. But everybody, I called everybody to let them know where they're serving, so.
I'll do is update big chart that has Board of Finance and Town Council.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Great. So we don't need to actually approve it, do we? You have to vote on it? Yeah, so. Okay, good. So I will get that out electronically to everybody so they can see where they, where you are again, and if you have any questions, certainly reach out.
Is that something the public?
Why don't you, can you just send that out, that, just send out that PDF that I sent you, just send it to everybody, if you don't mind?
Steve, this question, again, just in terms of transparency to the public, like, does, does this get listed to the, does the public understand?
It lives on the town website, and, and it's, and it's actually a place you'll visit a lot, because I, I do it all the time, like, who's on that Subcommittee, and where do I find it?
Or what, what Subcommittee am I on? Great.
I remember when Penny gave us the rules, and I remember it had to be committees, not Subcommittee.
I like to give you a chart with both, is because if you're planning any kind of a meeting with both Board of Finance and Town Council, you know who to call.
Yeah.
You can notice the meeting.
Thank you.
So that is, Robin brings up a great point. So legally, it's called committees, but it's so confusing in New Canaan, because we have a gazillion committees. But when we say Subcommittee, we know exactly what we're talking about. So that's why this
Minutes and notes.
This old
Of the town council.
Right, because a Subcommittee would be part of a committee.
Right.
Yes, right?
Because agree.
We did have a Subcommittee of a committee.
You have to be precise. Anyway.
So.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
So.
What's next?
So Subcommittee, I mean. So we'll change, we'll change that, we'll change that to Committee Assignments.
I'm with you, Penny.
A lawyer.
Precise language.
You'll only have to correct me about a hundred more times. All right, so we'll get that out. And again, if you have any questions, the one, the one point we want to make, though, about, about these committees is that you will, as the co-chair of, of these committees, you really, the most important thing is the liaison role that you'll have with the budgetary person you're assigning to. So Parks and Rec is an example. Robin's had a great job interfacing with Parks and Rec, but getting together with the, with the Board of Finance and their liaisons is important. So the our two co-chairs will get with their two co-chairs, and that's the group that goes to meet with Steve Banko or whoever, and anybody on those committees can join those meetings, but it's up to the the co-chairs to put those meetings together, get together with the Board of Finance, and, and don't make these folks go to extra meetings. We want one meeting, and Well, during the budget process, you want to be part of those meetings. Right, right. So, and some of, if, if you, if you're new and you, you're kind of working your way through here, just jump in with somebody that's done this before, because we really do want to eliminate the number of meetings we have, because these folks work a ton, especially during budget time. So we don't want to have them coming out for, for extra meetings, so.
Speaking of which, so say, you know, I'm, I'm like, I'm just going to say TDAC, so I'm the liaison for TDAC, so I will go to the meeting. And in terms of like, getting, if I think something should be on the agenda that we should discuss, I don't, like, how does that work in terms of report out?
So, so well, first of all, any, any council member can bring a, bring a, a item up for, to get on the agenda, and the agenda meetings that we'll have, Mark, Penny and I will meet the Friday before, Friday at one-thirty is our standing time, the week before the Wednesday meeting. So if you want to get something on the agenda, you need to get to one of us before that happens, so that we can get on the agenda. So that's the Friday, Friday at one-thirty is when we meet to set the agenda for the following week. And, you know, the rules of the council say that any, you have to quote me, Penny, here, but I think, yeah, if you, if you have to move it during a meeting, it's got to have a majority, but, but prior to that meeting, anybody can bring it to, to the council's attention, so.
But, but if it is just really something that's part of our committee reports, that just gets brought up, doesn't have to be part of the agenda unless there's a formal discussion or a vote that needs to take place.
Right.
It's informative.
So if you're just informing, you know, the, the council members on what went on in TDAC, that goes on during the end of our meeting when we do committee reports.
Okay.
Okay, we don't need to notice that as an agenda item.
Got it.
It's when you have to have a decision.
And, you know, you've, you've heard me mention Robin a couple of times about, I think she has done one of the best jobs in terms of getting to the Park and Rec meeting, and she'll come to our meeting during those committee reports, and she gives us like bang, 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 and just runs through exactly what's going on in Park and Rec. And after she's finished, you feel like, okay, I actually went to that meeting. And it's amazing, you know, when you give a good report like that, it's really informative, and that's what we're trying to do with these, with these committees.
Okay.
So.
We're not saying that the committee chairs necessarily have to go to the meetings. A member of your committee could be assigned to, to attend the meeting.
Right. And those, there'll be two, there's two co-chairs, and then you'll see when you get this spreadsheet, there's like four to five on each committee. Although there are some of the heavier lifts, like Board of Ed and Bylaws and Ordinances, where there's, where there's seven members, so. And that's because at times, those are heavy lifts, so. And that's, that's the way it breaks down. Any questions there?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have our final item is item number thirteen, which is the, the discussion and review of two-twenty Elm Street. This is a review and possible executive session to approve the acquisition of two-twenty Elm Street and the sale of two condominium units. We'd like to have a brief discussion prior to going to executive, so that, you know, we're trying to give this as much air as possible. We had a public hearing earlier at six-thirty. This has been an exhaustive few weeks for, for First Selectman Moynihan, as well as some of the assistance between Don Corbo and, and the Board of Ed, putting this deal together. It's a complicated deal, it's, it's gone through many phases, and we're hanging in there to try to get this done by the end of the year. So Kevin, if you want to just give a quick synopsis, and then if we need to go into executive, we will.
Synopsis that I gave in the public hearing. So the plan is to purchase from Bankwell Financial Corporation, the financial group, the two-twenty Elm Street building. The, many of you have toured, and also extinguishing the ground lease that we've owned, that we had in place under the building for, since two thousand and one for a price of six point one million dollars. The town will file a declaration of condominium and form a corporation to incorporate a condominium association. The town will be the declarant, and we will have three units of condominium and ownership of common elements in the two-twenty building. The town will hold and ownership of unit A, which is the first floor, and a conference room on the second floor, and an interior stairway to that conference room. The total of eight thousand twenty square feet for unit A. And the Board of Ed Administrative Offices, the Launch Program, and the Alternative Education Program will be in that unit A. The town proposes to sell unit B and unit C to two independent investors consisting of all the office space on the second floor, except for that small piece that for the conference room that the Board of Ed will have. And the two private investors will be paying prices of two, two million four ninety-seven, five hundred, and one million seven hundred thousand dollars respectively. The Board of Ed will, is required to give twelve months' notice before they can elect to terminate their existing lease for thirty, thirty-nine locusts. And the town and the board will coordinate the delivery of the notice, so that the effective date of the thirty-nine locust lease termination coincides with the estimated date of completion of the renovations to unit A. So unit A, currently the Bank, Bankwell space is empty. And but part of, part of the first floor is gridiron space, and they're not going to move out until July thirty-first at the latest. And there'll be we've allocated eight hundred thousand dollars toward renovations for the Board of Ed space in the, in the bond offering we just did. The town's paying less than two million dollars for the first floor, for the Board of Ed space. So that's the synopsis, and we, I think we should go into executive session for prior to, and then we, when we come out, you need to vote.
That's correct, that's correct. Okay, so we need a motion to go into executive. That was Penny, and seconded, Tucker will be the only one joining. Seconded by Christina, Christina, Christina seconded. Tiger can stay, I'm sorry, Tiger, you can stay on, otherwise, any, any members of the public? I want to thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
Very much. Doctor, we don't have anyone else on, but.
Well, we do, so you have to give me a minute here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back.
Thank you very much. We are now out of executive session on two-twenty Elm Street. We have discussed it in length, and now we will be calling a vote. The motion as it stands, item thirteen on our agenda, it's two-twenty Elm Street. Review and possible executive session to approve the acquisition of two-twenty Elm Street and the sale of two condominium units. And we need a motion.
So moved.
Christina.
Well, what, no, the motion should be. May I make?
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we approve the acquisition of two-twenty Elm Street and the sale of two condominium units.
Okay, Tom made the motion, and Christina?
Second.
Second. Discussion. We've discussed it enough, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
And Kevin, thank you. Thank you very much for putting the deal together. I mean, it was a, it's an incredibly complicated deal, so. And as we discussed, it's a great deal for New Canaan, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn. Maria had her hand up first. And Hillary seconded, so. And just a quick Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Enjoy your holidays. We'll see you at Carol's thing.